That is awesome.
Ahead of your.
I should have. In my office, a jar of alcohol. I have, yeah, I should, I could have kept that too. I could have do them.
Really cool. I don't want to look at it. All right, I like to call the town council work session for April 12th, 2022, 3:00 PM. And we begin with sustainable BREC plan project kickoff. Jesse Burley.
All right, thank you, Mayor Council. Thanks for having us today. We are here to kick off the project update for the Sustainable BREC Plan. And we are very excited to have with us today our consultant team with AECom and Western Urban Sustainability Advisors. So this is Deanna and Jerry. And they will be walking us through the bulk of the exercise today. But I'm going to give a little bit of background and purpose for this work session. Before we move on. So the Sustainable BREC Plan, as you all know, was adopted in 2011. It was one of the first sustainability plans really of any kind, particularly in mountain towns. So we can give ourselves a big pat on the back that we were ahead of the game. But it's been 10 years, a lot has changed, the community has changed. We went through a global pandemic and a lot has changed also in the field of sustainability. And so we really want to make sure that we're capturing all of those best practices and really moving this community forward. On February 22nd, Town Council gave us the green light to move forward with this project. We entered into contract with AECom. And here we are, one day in advance of our public open house, which takes place tomorrow at 5:30 CMC Breckenridge. And we are looking forward to engaging the public at that meeting. So the purpose of today's work session is to obviously introduce you to the project team as well as the scope, timeline and deliverables of the project. We'd like to lead council through a visioning exercise to help inform the project. Of course, this is your plan at the end of the day, and we want to make sure that you're engaged early and often in its outcomes. We'd like to understand specific deliverables that the council would like to see included that aren't currently in the plan. And then identify any particular stakeholder groups that we might be missing that you want us to make sure that we're engaging with. And so with that, I am going to. This is our agenda for today. Again, introducing the team, project scope, timeline and deliverables, the visioning exercise, and then open it up for discussion. A little bit of background beyond the Sustainable BREC Plan. The community, we have a climate action plan across Summit County, which sets greenhouse gas reduction emission goals. We've adopted an EV readiness plan that calls out very specifically our electrification and transportation efforts. We also have the destination management plan that was put together by the tourism office, water efficiency plan, all of these plans. So what does that mean? Why are we doing another plan? But sustainability is really taking a holistic and comprehensive approach. And we want to make sure that we are, are taking the most important elements out of this plan and really making. Get, getting the most out of all of these plans essentially to make sure we're syncing up the goals, make sure the timelines are all in place. And then understanding a better cost benefit analysis that currently is, is sort of lacking in, in these other plans, frankly. So that is the purpose of the Sustainable BREC Plan update. And I'm just making sure I hit all the high notes here. I think I did. And so I will turn it over to Deanna, who will walk us through the project itself.
Great, well, thank you, Mayor Council. We're excited to work with the town. I'm Deanna Weber with AECom, principal in charge of the project. Here with me is Jerry with West Herb Sustainability, also Angela, a local here with Aspire Sustainability. And as Jesse pointed out, there's an incredible foundation that you have laid to build upon that foundation. And really look at how we can integrate sustainability effectively. And ultimately get to web based reporting is what we're going to be doing. So what to expect during the Sustainable BREC update process? Public workshops, we have two scheduled. Our first one is tomorrow and then the next one is in July. We'll have a series of stakeholder interviews. We've started those interviews today. We have a number of interviews tomorrow and we'd love to hear from you. Who else we need to be talking to in terms of key stakeholders in the community that we need to really listen and learn from all of you on how to integrate that into the sustainability update process. We have three town council meetings scheduled. There can certainly be more if that's needed. And we have a data collection process already underway. Jesse and Teddy and the team have, has given us a significant amount of data already that we're going through. We'll be analyzing that data and looking at really key targets and benchmarks as we move forward. We'll have monthly social media blasts and website, website updates. We'll be developing a draft plan and that's when we come back to the community to get feedback from all of you and the public on that draft plan before we then finalize the plan. And this accumulates in what we call web based data reporting. And it allows us not to have a static PDF, but to look comprehensively online dashboard that we'll be able to see and track our performance as a community. And we're going to equip, we're doing a custom based tool. And the, the town here will be able to update that tool to show the progress. So on the next slide, we'll talk just a little bit about the timeline and the, the process. We talked about tomorrow evening's public workshop, number one. Well, in the meantime, right after that public workshop, we'll be launching an online survey to get a broader feedback from the community. We'll have monthly social media updates. Ultimately developing that draft plan in July. And that's when we'll be back sharing the, the draft plan materials, getting more feedback and also getting feedback from the community on the draft Sustainable BREC Plan. And it's important to note that it's not just about energy, water, waste, et cetera. Although all those things are very important, but we're really looking at the larger lens, the holistic perspective of sustainability, including livability, quality of life, transportation, mobility, housing, childcare congestion. We're looking at that larger lens of sustainability. And then we'll have our next town council meeting in August. And then to accumulate with finalizing the Sustainable BREC Plan and going live on the web with the online reporting. And all of that's really to target completing this by the Mountain Towns Conference in September. So that's what we're working towards. Jerry's going to take you through a couple of key questions we have.
Thank you, Diana. And it's a pleasure to meet you, Mayor and members of council. I'm Jerry Chiano. I am a sustainability mechanic. And I'm the proprietor of my own company, Western Urban Sustainability Advisors, based in Denver, but operating throughout Colorado and elsewhere in the United States as well. I formed that business after serving for seven years as Denver's first and so far only Chief Sustainability Officer. And it was an exciting run for seven years. We set a very ambitious greenhouse gas reduction goal in 2013. And we are one of a handful of cities that met a 2020 goal and we met it two years ahead of time. Also one of a handful of cities, six in total in the United States, that were rated at the platinum level of Lead for Cities and Communities Program. And so I formed this business to take the lessons I learned in Denver and apply them to other communities and the individual circumstances in places like Breckenridge. So tomorrow night, as we kick off our public engagement, we're going to take residents. We have about 70 people who are signed up right now. We will probably have some walk-ins as well. We want to take them through about an hour long exercise in a breakout session to do three things with them. We want to ask them some basic questions about what they've seen, how things have changed, both for the good and the bad here in this community. And, and by the way, we do that without using the word sustainability, because we don't want to get into definitions and so forth. We want to just ask them how things have changed and what they're concerned about. We want to ask them about the 10 topic areas that the town selected back in 2011 to organize its sustainability work around whether these all remain relevant, whether any need to be dropped, whether some need to be split apart or recombined, and whether there's new areas that we haven't even thought about at, eh, 10, 10 years ago, that now need to be added to the way we approach sustainability in this community. And so that will be part of the exercise we do. And I'm guessing this is. Oh, there, okay, great, yeah. And then we also want to address another topic with the, the folks who come. And that is this, what I call balancing approach. Sometimes it's called, you may have heard the term ESG, environmental, social and governance, which is a kind of a technical way of approaching these things. But I can tell you in seven years in Denver, as I thought about sustainability and thought what, what it's really all about. To me, it came down to a single word, which was balancing. You are balancing among environmental stewardship, which was where sustainability came from and grew out of and expanded out of. But you're also balancing a quality of life issues or livability issues. And kind of a new take on this, which was not part of the planning process 10 years ago, which is governance, equity, diversity and inclusion. You, in, in previous planning and your town was one of the first really to do a comprehensive sustainability plan. But previously you focused on what we're going to do with the environment and on other areas, but not so much about how we govern ourselves in these areas. Are we listening to the community? Can they talk to us? Do they understand what we're talking about? Do, do we understand what they're talking about? Do they see us as responsive? Are we being responsive in all of these areas? And so this is kind of a new gloss that will have a section in the reporting. We're going to explain to the community, the concept of balancing. It's really both within government and with the community. It's a, it's a combination of developing a vocabulary. So that when you talk to the community and to each other about sustainability issues, you're using terms that are familiar to everyone. And it's also a process of considering how you make decisions. Because that's what, as council members and, and the governing body of this community, you are making decisions involving scarce resources in terms of where to put those resources. You know, you've got these 10 focus areas, some of which have individual plans. But at the top level, you're making decisions among them as to how to allocate resources or combine them to work more efficiently. And so in the end, sustainability is a balancing process. And we'll be introducing this topic to the community tomorrow night and getting their reaction as to whether these terms, environmental stewardship, quality of life, governance and so forth are meaningful to them. If they can conceive how, how you would go about balancing these as you go forward with your sustainability programming for the next 10 years. It's only an hour that we have for them. An hour goes really quickly, as you know. But we will get as much information as we can. And this is just the beginning of the process. This is the first conversation we will be having with the community, not the last. And we also have meetings set up with some specific stakeholder groups tomorrow, which I'm very interested in and includes the restaurant community, lodging community, police and fire. In Denver, I did a lot of work with the police and fire departments, which people don't normally associate with sustainability. But they actually have very important roles in sustainability. And as a former prosecutor and also as a, as an attorney, you represented prisons and jails. I kind of have a unique perspective on working with agencies like that in the sustainability program. Let's go to the next one. And as I say, right at the end, we, after having kind of done brief education with the participants about these three areas, we want to ask how they think we're doing. Throughout this, we want to remind people that change goes in both directions. There has been both positive change in this community and negative. Just as an example, when I came here 10 years ago, for the first time, I noticed a bike trail. And it was pretty good, but it really didn't go as far as it needed to go. It looked like it could use some work. If I can, and as I've come back and now, when I come back now, it's much better now. And there's lots of things like that in this community that have gotten better and other things that have not gotten better or have changed in a different direction. And sustainability is a balancing process. So you do need to balance the good with the bad. Let's go to the next slide. We will give them information on how to stay involved. We expect to be up here from time to time over the next few months. I know from my work as a sustainability director, that there's no better way to learn what's going on in the community than just by walking around in it or biking around in it. And so we will be back and we will be talking to the community repeatedly over the next few months. And I think we can get this done in six months. My business is one of the first members of Mountain Town 2030. And we're sponsoring the conference here in September. So I'm very excited about bringing this all to fruition within, within six months. And with that, I think we can take your questions and comments about where we're going with this project.
All right, thank you. Questions first.
No, that was a sympathy question.
Do you feel like this is too broad of a range of topics to do a really thorough job on in one plan?
You know, the plan really is. We're using the term plan and you have other plans. But one way to, to think about this plan as opposed to the others is, you know, in government, you often hear the term silos. You know, that we're siloed, that this department's in one silo and this department's in another silo. And, you know, silos aren't bad. They're, they have a very important purpose on the farm. But every once in a while, you've got to get out of the silos and meet in the barnyard. And so this, this Sustainable BREC Plan, that's the barnyard. That's the intersection of all, of all of these other plans. And sustainability is broad, particularly when you bring in the concepts of livability and the quality of life in the community. And particularly when you bring in diversity, equity, issues like that and governance. And so it is broad by its nature. But I also believe it's hard to strike that balance unless you include all, all the things that need to be balanced.
You know, piggybacking on that, Jerry is. Some of, some of the questions you can be asking, what has changed for the, for the negative? I mean, I think, I think most of the people you talk to will say congestion, it's overcrowded. And there's a limited amount of what any sort of legislation or policy can do, because Denver is just, just growing so quickly. And so, you know, so I just hope that doesn't, you know, I, you know, I'm, I hope your mission focuses on the environment, on sustainability and not get mired into problems that, like housing, like, you know, we use hemorrhage money for housing. One three month plan is not going to remedy that situation. So, you know, so that's, that's what I'm, you know, I, I hope you'll focus on that. Another thing is, is with web based reporting, what is that? And who sees that? And, and is that something that we're going to look at? Is that the public looks at?
Well, right now, in the last 10 years, the town has, has issued an annual report. And that's the way almost everyone does it. But the problem with an annual report is it only comes out once a year. And it's based on data that's usually six to 18 months old. People see it once. So there's no reason for them to keep coming back, you know, to your plan, to your data page to see what's going on. It's kind of like the, you know, the, the little end of the year family report postcard you get during the holidays. Now you know what's going on with the, 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 the family, but you see it once a year and then you don't hear for them for another year. So web based reporting is a way to provide dynamic, closer to real time, regularly updated data to the community about what's going on with sustainability.
That the public accesses and we get access.
Both, there's an internal component to it and there's an external component. And where you draw the line, how much of the internal stuff you want to share with the public, that's your decision. You know, there are systems out there where you can share a lot of it or a little of it. That's a decision that you'll have to make. But it's important because it will keep the community coming back or give them a reason to keep coming back and checking rather than having to wait for that annual update. And it will also expand accountability for your town staff.
You know, and while I'm on a roll, how, on the online survey, how, how is that going to be promoted? How, how are you going to get folks to know that there is an online survey to participate?
Yeah, I think, well, I may actually turn to Jesse. We worked with her to promote this meeting and had a pretty good result, I think. But you can probably address that better than I can.
No, I think, I think there's sort of the, sorry, the, the usual channels. And then I think we're going to have to rely on more of that networking component. So, you know, getting it out through your networks and in, and, you know, word of mouth, so to speak. Because I think when you just, you know, if you just publicize it in the Summit Daily, for example, there's only certain people that read that, right? And so one of the things that we focused on for the public open house that we hope to carry on with the survey is we, we've worked a lot with Mountain Dreamers and the FERC and have done all of this promotion also in Spanish. And so that's our first foray into, into broadening the, the typical channels that we, we usually use as a government. So any, clearly we're open to suggestions as well. But I think that there's a lot of opportunity through networking and through frankly, lessons learned from previous.
You know, I'd suggest, BOSAC was really successful and they have those little square things at the. What is it?
QR code.
QR codes, yeah. At, at Trailheads. And now there's no Trailhead for sustainability, but there's recycling centers. There's, you know, various of those clear intention things, you know, whether you drop off your glasses and stuff. So maybe there would be a good, good idea.
We already have the QR code, so perfect. I love those ideas. Thank you.
Yeah, other questions?
In your opinion, is 10 key sectors too many?
It is more than most communities do. You know, I'm working right now with Laramo County on what started out to be a climate plan, but is evolving into a sustainability plan. They have been organizing around four topic areas. And in connection with that project, we've also looked at the other county level climate plans that are in Colorado. Typically, we're seeing six or seven in, in each of those. So four is, is on the low end. And it's not unusual to see an expansion beyond that. 10 is definitely on the high end. I can't think of any other sustainability or climate plan where I've seen that many.
And that's something that we'll reevaluate through that process, right?
Because remember, you know, nested within however many you have will be specific issues. You know, people always want to know whether their issue is in there, whether it's waste or food or transportation or housing or whatever. But once you make sure everyone's particular interest is nested in one of them, you can definitely go with fewer. In the end, people aren't concerned with the total number. They want to know whether their particular issue areas in there.
And it's really interesting earlier to see how you broke it up into the livability, environmental and governance. And I think a lot of our existing 10 categories can be combined and moved in there. I think what I'm looking for in this, of course, we want sustainability with a big S. And in that housing, we have our plan, transit, we have a plan. But I would like some emphasis on the environmental side. And within that, it's a global issue. So of course we can impact things locally. But how do we factor in with our plan and working with CC4CA, the state, Mountain Town 2030? How do those, how does that factor bigger than us? How can we contribute to those causes?
Yeah, and, and one of the advantages of having this overarching sustainability plan is it really facilitates the application of equity, diversity and so forth. Because the problem when you're relying on topic specific plans is that you try to address equity within that topic specific plan. You have a transit plan and you say, how do we provide equity in the transit plan? But when you consider them in the barnyard, as I've said, you can provide equity solutions in one area to a problem that comes up in another area. For example, in Denver, as they've been considering putting in a, a charge of pay as you throw, you know, for garbage disposal, which hits lower income people hard. One of the solutions that I recommended is why don't we take the general revenues that are saved by doing that and purchase panels in a solar garden for the low income people who are now seeing their, you know, their, their garbage charges all of a sudden show up. And so that's this, this format where you're trying to balance and having an overarching plan allows you to address equity more effectively than if you tried to do it within a single particular subject matter. You can, you can reach into one area to create us an equity solution for another area.
So is it better to be broad or is it better to be specific?
The, well, it's a common, it's, it's, you've got the specifics in the individual plans and components. But you've got these overarching concepts of environmental stewardship, livability, social, or what's going on in your community and governance and equity and diversity. So it's, it's, it's a combination of both.
We, we haven't talked a lot about the key performance indicators, but within, whether it's within each individual topic or whether it's reframed to be a little bit more like this, there will be very specific key performance indicators that are target and timeline driven. And that's the, that's the action oriented piece. That's the, that's the roadmap, right? So we're kind of talking about how to frame the plan right now and to get the public's input on exactly the same questions that you guys are asking. But ultimately, we're going to, we're going to drill down into some very specific action oriented performance indicators.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think to sort of Dennis's point, my, my problem with this whole thing is this is a huge broad brush on a lot of stuff that we, we do every day. We do housing every day. We do childcare every day. I, I don't need this plan to tell us what our, our faults on housing are. We have a plan. We have a plan that we're implementing. I don't need this plan to tell me what we. I already know. I, I just, I think there's, for me, this was going to be about sustainability. And maybe that's small s, I don't know. But I wanted, I was looking for action on things like pay as you throw and our dumpsters and things that we're not very good at. Not the things that we already do, and I think we do pretty well, even though they're difficult, like childcare. And could we do childcare better? Yeah, sure, we could throw $10 million out at a year. You coming back and saying we have a childcare problem is not going to be a revelation to me. And honestly, to waste time on this with that, I I'm not really in favor of this being this broad, honestly. When I read these first questions, I mean, what changes have you seen in BREC over the last 10 years? I just can't imagine that this sustainability and any of the things that we, that we really, that I want to know about are going to come out of that. What has changed in the last 10 years? I can start writing you a list right now, what people will say to you, because we hear it all the time. So I'm, I'm pretty confused about where we're going with a sustainability plan that is going to cover a lot of stuff that we already do.
Eric, I, I agree. I think it's really ambitious. However, I see it more as opportunity. I, I, I don't think you're going to help us tackle childcare or housing. But, you know, our, frankly, our schools are not doing a good job with sustainability or teaching environmental stewardship or anything else. So, you know, if, if we can start in childcare and, you know, I, I think there's opportunity to cross these lines. It's very ambitious and I agree with Eric. I mean, we, this is what we, I mean, what you just laid out is what I would tell the new councilman is what they're going to do for the next four years. You know, so, but it, it does touch every element of the, of the community or, or most in many of our challenges. But I, I, I'm interested to hear more because I think there are opportunities in all these areas to connect and, and, and to interweave the solutions. Couple other challenges I encourage you guys to consider is what's unique to us as a resort community. One of our biggest challenges is to speak to our guests. And, and how do we get them on board? They're here for five days, you know, and they're gone. And how do we get them on board to what we're doing? And that's something we've been challenged with for quite some time. Secondly, it's, 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 it's our workforce. And you touched on it, some is socioeconomic issues with that along with the cultural and language barriers, et cetera, et cetera. So I hope that as you go through this work. So I hope that as you go through this, we're we're not like the front-range cities. We we are a very unique community. I think many people come to ski towns with a bit of a rebel spirit and they don't like to be told what to do. So it presents challenges, it presents opportunities. So.
If I could, well, I will come back to what you just said, but Mayor, first to address the point that you made. So in a planning process like this, typically you do a gap analysis. We actually do look at all the existing plans. And we do not write a new housing plan or some other plan that you already have. What we're looking for is 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 where are there gaps between the plans you already have, not creating a new one. In fact, my first day on the job in Denver, the mayor told me, he said, I do not want you rewriting anyone's plan. You know, we're not going to go back and take 18 months to rewrite everything that we've already done. We're going to start with the existing plans and look where we can implement the parts that influence sustainability the most. And we're taking the same approach here. We're looking at all of the different plans. We're doing a gap analysis. It's more in terms of where there are gaps in between what you're doing that we can fill or where there may be synergies between existing plans where you can actually be serving both plans with a particular type of action, where maybe, you know, again, in the silos, the people who did one plan weren't really talking to the people who were doing another plan. And so that is what we're going to be looking for. And I will also tell you, our consulting team, we aren't going to tell you you have a problem anywhere. We're asking the community where they think, and and your staff and so forth and your stakeholder groups, where they think you have a problem. And we may report to you what they're saying, but it's not our job to tell, you know, an independent community where they have problems. Only the community itself can can do that. And, you know, Councilman, you're you're correct that that there are a lot of opportunities here. That's what this gap analysis is meant to do, to look for the opportunities where there may be synergies or abilities to combine things. Or, you know, as I mentioned to you, Councilman, to reach across from one area and create a solution in another area. And that's what you do when you're kind of stepping back and looking at everything at the same time.
So what do the actionable items look like? I mean, how many of them are truly, you know, for lack of a better better word, environmentally sustainability-related? What what percentage of what you're going to give us are things that will go there as opposed to, I'm still, I won't lie, I'm a little bit confused about what we're doing.
Yeah.
So.
Well, let let me give you an example of how things can connect. You know, for for transit planning, there will definitely be some specific recommendations as to either extensions or new programs you can do to get more people out of cars. And transit is an important part of that. But one of the things you see in many locations and possibly here, we certainly, you know, I'm, I should mention in the interest of full disclosure, I'm myself a second homeowner in Crested Butte, and I deal with a lot of the issues there that you deal with here. And I've heard a lot of the same conversations and complaints. But, you know, you can have a great transit plan, but if you don't have enough people to fill those bus driver seats because they can't afford to live here, then you're going to have trouble implementing that transit plan. And so that's why we look at topics like housing and affordability and childcare in the sustainability context, because you can't do the environmental stewardship parts of what you want to do in isolation from those other issues. And that's, you know, why we are doing things this way. Those are the problems that we're going to be looking at. You know, we we can talk all you want about local food and so forth. But if, you know, we don't have the processing capacity in the valley have to rely on supply lines that may be disrupted, then there's a problem.
Sorry, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead. Yeah.
You ask a great question, Mayor, and we've done a lot of deep, just sustainability plans for very large organizations. And we get into granularity, just taking energy. Where are the energy hogs in the the town? What's our energy use intensity? What's our renewable capacity? What can each community member do to reduce overall energy use? So I think that if you just take energy, you look into water, you look into waste, we're going to get into the details of each of those components.
You you know what, you know, and obviously you guys are way credentials. I have I have total faith in Jesse as well. But two things that I'd love to see come out of this, and and I know it's it's kind of very nuanced, is one, how do we get more people to recycle? Our recycling rate is 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 nominal. It's terrible. Two, how can we alert the visitors to that they don't have to buy single-use water bottles? I mean, I mean, these are, these are things I can I can look at, I see every day. And and hopefully you can take your expertise in other parts of the state in Denver. And I mean, it's amazing, you go to City Market and people buying water bottles like they're like they're, you know, outfitting the branch, Davidian compound. And but we have amazing water bottle, drinking water
Right.
in Breckenridge. And it's it's a it's an education, you know, and so, but I I wear the loss. We've been, we've been beating our heads against the wall forever trying to figure it out. So I look forward to your answer.
Yeah, so.
Look forward to your solution.
Great, great question. And, you know, just when you take waste management as one of the key components within the environmental stewardship section, the first key thing we highly recommend is let's look at the waste audit. Have you done a waste audit? What what is, what does that look like? We've done waste audits with big, large, complex organizations and small communities. And you'll be surprised when you first, you you need to kind of first measure, you know, what the existing status is. Then we're also going to look at best practices and other communities, not just in Colorado, but I think within North America in particular. And we're going to look at, you know, how can we make it easy for people to recycle? But what's really, what's the carrot and the stick specifically related to recycling? And look at how can the town of Breckenridge really be a leader with environmental stewardship? So each of the components of energy, water, waste, transportation, greenhouse gas emissions, et cetera, has a whole slew of key performance indicators that Jesse mentioned. What's good is we have a a very deep bench of information that Jesse's given us to really look at what's your glide path, to understand, okay, are we on the trajectory to hit a 20% energy use reduction in our facilities? If if so, how are we going to get there? And then we're going to basically drill down into probably half a dozen to a dozen different components and do a cost-benefit analysis. Okay, if we're going to make this change on recycling, how much does it cost and what's the benefit? What does the town get back? You know, how does that affect our overall greenhouse gas emissions? So I think what I'm hearing is the need to really get granular, which we have actually a lot of deep spreadsheets already. We quite honestly didn't want to overwhelm the public tomorrow evening with these huge lists. We kind of wanted to take a bigger perspective. And what we're hearing, I think, this this evening from all from you is let's make sure we're heavy on the environmental stewardship stewardship components that you'd see in a typical traditional sustainability plan. And are we going to be maybe a little higher level on the other aspects? But what Jerry also brings up too, that's so important, is we're constantly looking at co-benefits. Where can we get a win-win? Where can we do leak detection, save on water and also reduce our energy use, because we're not pumping and treating and moving that water so much? So there's a lot of different components like that that we'll be getting into in this process. So I'm glad that you're ready to go deep already at the first meeting, because we're going to be prepared when we get this broader perspective from the community to be able to go deep into each key performance indicator. We'll talk about what the targets are and how we're going to get there and what's the cost associated with getting there.
Seems like a 40-year project.
I feel like one thing that would help a lot, because I think the plans have some of the information for this gap analysis. But I actually think like committees and organizations like BTO has every economy discussion. They've already had all those. So I'm hoping that you'll meet with the BTO, meet with BOSAC, the Rec and Open Space Committee, meet with the Housing Committee, meet with the Childcare Committee, because a lot of the questions that I think you guys or the public might come up with, thinking that they have this really brilliant idea, we're probably already doing. And so I feel like half of your list from tomorrow night could just be what Breck needs to do to communicate better, because we're, a lot of the concerns we're doing already. Or we've looked into and can't do for a specific reason, or we're getting ready to do. I mean, so much of it is going to be that. And so I would encourage you to talk to some of the experts that, you know, these meetings, I feel like would go a long way with doing your legwork for at least four or five of these. You know, and I, I mean, I I agree with kind of having the more environmental sustainability sort of using that as going to the specific, you know, getting really deep dive into that and then really leaning on these other committees for some of those other areas. I feel like that would make this a little bit more manageable.
You you bring up a really good point about storytelling, which is also one of the goals of this project. And and we started with all 10 of these, because this is what the 10 are in the plan today. And I think that in re-engaging the public tomorrow night, it's an opportunity to, you know, we'd be lucky if people were reading our annual report every year, right? And so this is a way to say, this is where we've been. This is what we've been looking at in the past. But now it's time for the next 10 years, and what does that look like? And and there is a lot of work already being done. And we don't, we do not plan to reinvent the wheel. So that is not the intention here. When we put childcare up on this slide, it is the fact that it is simply in the plan as it is today. And what do we need to do about it moving forward?
Yeah, and I like the idea of the co-benefits. I mean, I think that really, that's cool, and I think we should be looking for that. One other, I didn't see like energy or building code, like actual code. That's a big topic that we're kind of always looking at right now. So I don't know if there's any way for you guys to look at what we've got and see, you know, it, is that right for our community? Is that the way everyone's going now, or is there something better? I mean, I know that Jesse has put a ton of time, and so I'm sure that it's, you know, close. But it'd be great to know and just have, I mean, someone to back you up to say, this is the right thing. This is, you know, exactly the way we should be going. Or if it's not, I'm sure she will take that in stride as well. So that's one more thing that I would like to see in there. And then the, on the timeline, it didn't seem, you mentioned these key performance indicators. But I didn't see, like, it feels like in June, after you gather all the data and you're starting to think about what the sustain, the draft sustainable plan is going to look like, maybe that's, that would be a good time for us to meet again and make sure that we understand this is what you've been hearing, this is where you've decided the direction you're going to go and present it to council so that we are all, so that our expectations are in alignment. Sure.
Yeah, and those key performance indicators get into the specifics, Mayor, that you indicated you were concerned about. You know, we want a plan that has very specific programs with those numeric indicators attached to them married to a dynamic web-based reporting system rather than the annual report. So that you you may not be able to update every piece of data every month, but you should be able to update them a lot more frequently than once a year, which in turn bolsters the accountability of of the government going forward.
Yeah, and I think the point's well taken. You know, Kelly, you mentioned, you know, coming back with those key performance indicators a little earlier in the process, which I think makes makes sense. We want, may want to push that next meeting up a little earlier in the process. Because we'll be taking, for example, the category of water. Underwater, we'll have a whole series of key performance indicators, how much water we're using, you know, et cetera. And then within that, there'll be a whole series of strategies addressing those key key performance indicators. And then we'll also in ultimately get towards a roadmap where we identify, okay, how does that get done? Who who does it? Is it a policy decision? Is it a physical, you know, capital improvement? And then what are potential funding sources for that particular strategy? So that's part of the roadmap for implementation, really, that we, as we look 10 years out.
One, go, go quick question. When is the restaurant meeting? I had, I didn't hear of that. I'm in the restaurant community.
Yeah, Corey should have sent out a couple of emails. She was having trouble forwarding the calendar. It's tomorrow at at 11:00 at Public Works, Public Works Conference Room.
I didn't know about it either.
Jay.
Yeah, and with all these things, as I mentioned, this this month, these these are the first conversations we have, are having, not the last. And, you know, I think you mentioned earlier, we have to export our good ideas, and you're absolutely right. That is, you you said, you know, we can't be like Denver, you you have to do things differently. You're correct about that. Jeffrey, you know, when you said recycling, if I'm in a town like Denver, for example, I'm going to talk about consumption decisions to get that under control. But when people are only here for five days, you can't really influence their consumption decisions. And in fact, some of the disciplines that they impose back home come off when they're here. I mean, that's one of the problems that you and every other Mountain Town deal with. And that's why the export is so important, because if we can create a a new best practice here, it will have real value if we exported it other places. That's why there's groups like Mountain Towns 2030. On its own, Breckenridge can't solve any sustainability problem or any environmental problem. Colorado can't on its own. But what you can do is set great examples and be a laboratory for great practices. You know, I don't really believe in lead by example in the sense that most people think if they set an example, then everyone will follow it. It doesn't happen automatically. You have to create the great examples, but then you also have to consciously export them elsewhere. And that is the real advantage that a place like Breckenridge has over a place like Denver. Because while you may only get people here for five days, you know, a year, when you get them, they're on leisure time. And they have the time to pay attention to things and notice things and notice differences between the way you do business here and the way you do do it elsewhere, and then take them home. And ultimately, you can solve these sustainability and climate problems in a place like Breckenridge. That's how you're going to do it.
Well, that's the other opportunity. I mean, we get 2 million skier days or something, right? So we have the opportunity to influence the masses. Really successful. I mean, that we, that would, what, you know, the last Mountain Town meeting in Park City, I, that really resonated with me. There's a huge opportunity there.
And I think that there's an opportunity with the size of the community that you are, that you can be nimble, that you can be effective and a change agent a lot faster than other communities that don't have the infrastructure that you have here.
I I hope you're right. We've been struggling with some of the recycling, some of the other stuff. So I hope you're right.
One more question, just to see what we can expect out of those certain things. I think that would overlap into land uses, environmental side, a lot of different things. Are we going to look ahead? Are we going to look at our community solar gardens and see what makes most sense for the community? If we need to think about big ideas, what we're going to do with this in the future? From the policy perspective, I've of course appreciate, like, we do not need to reinvent the wheel. But I want to make sure that we're not just looking to other communities, what they did years ago, but see what we can potentially do to get ahead.
Um, yes, we do want to, it does have to be forward-looking. We we need to look at trends in technology, obviously, and in strategies, and also in behavior and choices that, you know, people are making. Because when you did this plan 10 years ago, I I'm sure that you had DVD rental stores in town. Right? Where are they? They aren't here anymore. And going forward, what are the changes that are going to happen 10 years from now that we need to take a, take account of right now? So yes, that has to be part of the plan.
Anything else, Dan?
No.
What else do you need from us tonight?
Just to know that, you know, we have an open line. We encourage you to contact us. We're not here to do an end run around your staff, but, you know, one of the reasons that you hire consultants is You can say things to them that you may not be comfortable saying to your staff or to your community. And, and, and in addition, we can say things to you that they may not be able to say. So that's kind of the role we see ourselves in with you going forward.
I don't think any of us have those problems, just so. I just hope at that open house is no single-use water bottles.
Well, and again, technology, that's a great example, because one of the big technical changes. Coming out of Ball Corporation is the replacement of plastic bottles with aluminum bottles. Because aluminum, unlike plastic, is 100% recyclable and does not, it does not degrade in the recycling process. And does not result in microplastics going into the ocean. So at Ball Arena now in, in Denver, in many of the sports venues, there are no plastic bottles anymore. Could you work with the lodging industry here to say, if you're going to give out bottled water, give it out in cans, you know, aluminum cans?
Or grocery store.
Yeah, and we'll connect you with Ball Corporation, and you can talk to them about doing your, what they've done elsewhere.
You know, I think, um, you know.
I like their beer cups.
Mayor, to your question, you know, we would appreciate as you have ideas and thoughts related to the sustainability. Update process, you know, we would definitely welcome your, your feedback on that. Let Jesse know your thoughts and, you know, we'll be happy to get as aggressive as you want to get on certain strategies. For example, we're working with SFO Airport right now. Changing their tenant guidelines and contracts. So that any vendor in the future at SFO Airport will not be able, will not be allowed to sell a plastic water bottle. So there's different strategies, different levelers, you know, it's, it's the carrot and the stick, right? So we'll certainly be able to, to work with you and come back with a variety of ideas to try out on you to see what's, what's appropriate for Brecken.
Because we have a new aggressive attorney, just really would love to, uh, get, get heavy-handed with some of the grocery retailers.
We're excited to pass an ordinance as soon as the state opens the way for us. You know, I mean, I, at least this side of the group is.
So, let me just say. I feel like we always have very mixed success with consultants. I don't want you to be offended by. By this. It's just the reality that every one of us had a different conversation and heard different things from you than every, you know. We're a, we're an elected, non-professional political body. That we're all looking for different things. The more you check in with us, the better the outcome of this will be. Because if we don't catch issues that we're either missing or things that we don't honestly think fit in this. Before it's too far down the line. That's, that's just, I don't want to end up there. We're in the middle of a plan right now that's not going the way we really want. And I think a lot of it is because there weren't a lot of check-ins. So if you can do that more often, whether it's through Jesse or whatever, the better this will be. Because we've all been down this road a bunch of times before, and sometimes it's great, and sometimes it's not, and we feel like we didn't get our money. Did stuff that we just didn't really have a reason to talk about, so.
No, thank you.
And I think it's, it was clear to me sitting here listening very intensely on what's important for the council. In this study and what I heard, where you, where they really want the effort focused, so.
And if I have to force myself, I think, I'm saying I, by the way, because I'm the project manager and the day-to-day contact. If I have to force myself to come to Breckenridge, it's a tough job, but I will share with you, I don't know if I should or not, but just so you know. I do not charge travel time or expense. So my meter doesn't start running until I'm here and I'm happy to come up here to have those frequent meetings, if that helps you out.
Excellent, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, Erin.
Hi.
Welcome to your last meeting.
Thank you. It's weird.
All right, Planning Commission decisions. For the fifth. Of April 2022. Any, anybody, anybody, anybody?
A general question.
Yes, ma'am.
We will need a new planning commissioner. Who is on the selection committee for that?
Funny you should say that.
By the way, typically what staff would do on, and we talked to Mark, is they will post this for, what, a week or two? You'll post for a vacancy, two weeks. And then, uh, how do you typically put it together, your, your selection committee?
Well, Rick, before you do that, I, I want to have a broader conversation with the council about going back to the way we used to do things.
This next one right away?
Like to start it right away. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, look, I, I pushed this the last time, trying to, trying to make less work for us. Because I didn't like those five-minute interviews. I don't think it's been successful, personally. I, I think I'd like to go back to where we. Interview everybody and we make the selection in the end. And I don't know how, I, I was going to bring this up in other matters tonight, but. Since you asked.
That we were, right now, there are what we consider three council-appointed boards, if we do not, that aren't temporary in nature. So that's BOSAC Planning Commission and Liquor and Marijuana Authority. So if you were going to interview, to start off, those would be our recommendation that you do those three.
Again, liquor.
And what?
They're considered temporary. They're temporary because it allows people outside, they don't have to be a registered voter. In Breck to be on that, like events.
Social equity.
Social equity.
Childcare.
Childcare. And then the other ones are not advisory, they're advisory to departments, rec, police.
Right, so, right, yeah. How's everybody feel about?
That's a good start. I mean, I'm 100% with you. I think we need to go back to that.
I didn't know what it was before, but yes.
Rapid fire. We, we did, we got away from it because. Honestly, I felt like sometimes council wasn't really prepared to really delve into the people sitting in front of us. And as long as we all sort of agree, look, we're going to ask good questions and come up with the best candidates, then I think it works. But we were a little overwhelmed with a bunch of other stuff at the time, so we decided to just peel some work off, but.
So would a subcommittee narrow it down, or do we interview?
We'll just get, we'll just get, we'll just get everybody, whoever applies, and we'll just, if we have to start meetings earlier to do it, we'll do that. You know, we'll do five to seven minutes per person kind of thing like we did in past, and they'll, I, I think one, one thing I had mentioned to Rick that I think would be helpful is if. We had written, written the answers to some questions first, and maybe that'd be something that staff would do. So maybe staff could have some questions that everybody would answer, so we'd get sort of a, you know, an idea, so you wouldn't have to sit here and.
Background type.
Get background stuff, exactly. And then we could hit on some more specific things, like how do they feel about the planning process? What do you feel about growth in Breckenridge? What, you know, when you talk about planning, what, you know. What's your opinion on how the historic district functioned, so?
Well, and I do think also what's missing, I mean, I'm in, I am in favor of this. And I think what could also help is if council decides on. Maybe a, a rubric or a set of values of what they're looking for in their commissions and boards as far as. You know, representation and diversity experience. I had another one too, but, but yeah. And perhaps people could answer questions about that upfront too.
Right.
And then you'd be able to already kind of get an idea. Now, of course, from an equity lens. There would have to be some really good instruction as far as like a word limit and, you know, things like that. But I think. I know it's, it's cumbersome, but I do, I agree. I think it's, it's a good way to go.
I think all the questions should have a word limit.
You don't like to read much, do you?
No, I just think, I think, you know, you don't, you don't want to get typing diarrhea. I think, you know, you, you want someone to be concise with their, their. Kill your darlings, Faulkner said.
Anything there?
Nope.
You okay with this?
Yep.
Okay. I couldn't go.
I know.
Just poker face.
Yeah, I don't know that you need to go the whole way. You could get it whittled down, but I'm not going to be here. Someone will let you guys make that decision.
We're going to make you apply for something, so. All right, good. That's my other matter. Anything else with, uh, anything else with planning? Since we got totally sidetracked. There are no call-ups for the evening. Uh, Legislative Review, we got Big Sky Condo Unit G A Development Agreement, second reading packet.
So the only substantial change that's in your packet is the addition of the language that prohibits short-term rental. For the restrictive covenant agreement for this project. I do want to note that the Hogans closed on the 1031 exchange with Eric Doman. So the Hogans are now the owners of the unit. Eric Doman is a party in the, to the agreement that's in your packet, you'll see. But Eric has agreed to sign, the town has guaranteed the employee housing restriction covenant either way. Because that agreement runs with the land and is binding upon future owners of the property. So we're covered for that. Uh, housing does have a minor amendment that will be made to the restrictive covenant regarding the exemptions to the housing guidelines. And that'll be made prior to execution. Mark Hogan's okay with that, that amendment. That's all I have.
What is that amendment?
Well, you know, the restriction that is included in your packet has a section that. Provides an exception to the employment requirement for persons that retired. And it points to the town housing guidelines. The town housing guidelines don't have any provisions in there right now, so it's a bit ambiguous. We do have a section in the covenant in general that points to our guidelines, but having this specific conversation about retirement and pointing to guidelines that don't exist.
Fair enough. Questions?
I thought that was in there, but. No.
All right, thank you. This will be on for a second reading. Thanks, Jep. Uh, ground lease with FERC for first reading.
And council in front of you is first read of an ordinance that if approved would allow the town to enter into a 75-year ground lease for a piece of property in the McCain subdivision. This property is being leased to the Family Intercultural Resource Center. To house their new flagship building that they want to build out on that site. It's, uh, you know, give or take around one acre of land out there. So again, it's a 75-year lease. There are specifics in there. I've gone over those with the council. FERC is supportive of this ordinance as written. And so I have Peter Joyce is here. And if you have any questions for them.
Questions?
Did, did they raise any concerns?
No.
Burning, okay.
Good, good, yeah. All right, there you go. Thank you. B C Admin Rules, Events Committee Rules and Regulations Amendment.
So Mayor and Council, the. Events Committee has been operating since 2018, and they haven't had any administrative rules to help guide. Sort of the structure of the meetings. And so we have been working, staff has been working with the committee for the last couple of months, both on the resolution that you saw at your last meeting. And then it, as well on these rules that are presented to you today. Generally, they follow the same format that we have used for other commissions and committees. They have been reviewed by the group, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have. One thing I will note, because it stands out, is. There in section 5.112 is highlighted. It's not highlighted for any specific purpose. It was an oversight.
It's fun.
Want to see if anyone noticed.
One thing I brought up to Shannon when we met yesterday was under removal of officers. Any officer of the committee may be removed by affirmative vote of a majority of all members of the committee or council. I think we need to add council, and Shannon said she was going to look through all the other stuff we have. I, I think we need that option.
Yep.
I thought you were going to make.
No, I have another, I have another, I have another comment. Sorry. So just to be clear, that would remove the person from the chair or vice chair position, but not necessarily from the committee.
Any officer, because it's an officer.
If we're looking, so there in the. So again, section 5.1, there's the statement that town council.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
I had a question about conflict of interest. With this particular group, considering. And I don't.
They all have a conflict?
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's my point, I guess. But now granted, I'm not sure how much they actually can prevent something from happening and, and that sort of thing. Like if they have really any power to. Have a conflict of interest, you know what I'm saying? Because there are people who put on events talking about events, and you could say that. All of the events are conflicts of interest because they put on events and it's a, it could go on. So. Any thoughts on that, or?
I think Carol maybe would want to weigh in on that as well. I think that was part of the reason why we wanted to expand the representation from the arts community. Because, you know, say particularly backstage theater, they generally don't do events outside of their facility. So they add a perspective that is maybe different from some of the other folks that are on the committee. And we have the two at-large members who aren't necessarily members of the events community as well. So it adds a little bit of, of a different voice. You also have a council member, a staff member. So I think that helps a little bit too. But I, I agree with your, your point. There could be sort of a, a leaning towards more of an event, of an approval of events, I think, le- less likely. You know, trying to prevent an event from happening. But I will say that, actually, I mean, I think maybe you've seen it in Dick and Carol as well. That the, the committee does tend to balance itself. And so when you have someone, the, the group is very good about bringing up concerns. But also balancing concerns that maybe could come from a personal perspective.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm less, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about, because I've, I've sat in on plenty of the events meetings. I'm actually not worried about how it functions. I'm more worried about having the language of conflict of interest in here. Knowing that even, because like, if it's treated the same way that it is with council, like we can't even speak about. Even if we're against something or supporting something, like that doesn't matter. If we have a conscious conflict of interest, we're not allowed to speak to it. And I just don't want to hamstring. Like the majority of the commission, the, the committee from talking.
It's a great point, Erin, because the committee needs experienced events people to function. Yeah, I mean, we realized that early on, you know, from my experience with the committee. So I think you bring a good point. We might want to just look at that language one more time. Because I do think we need some conflict of interest, but this might be a unique language, but it might be a unique committee.
Yeah.
In terms of that, because we, we need people in the events business to serve on this committee effectively, because you need to know events.
Yeah.
You, one thing that would help me. With this would be the at-large. Maybe we say they may not have. Maybe they're the ones that have the strict conflict of interest, so that that voice, so that we get community members. That maybe have, you know, a different perspective around events.
Yeah.
Serve there.
I like that too.
But it might be something we take another look at.
I would just say that we can, I don't know what the timeframe is to move this forward, but between now and tonight, we can look at the ethics code. It's very specific and pretty narrow, so maybe we just need to be citing to the ethics code and make sure that. Usually it's whether you stand to gain financially in some way or not. So, so we can make sure that we are just, they're governed also. All appointees are governed by the ethics code, so we can tie it to that.
And it is actually, the language in there does tie back to the ethics code.
We govern by an ethic code?
No, you're not. Everybody else is.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have a job, so it doesn't. Anything else on rules and regs for?
Okay, this is another, you know, I'm on my way out, so I just have to say all the things. Just trying to clean it all up. Okay, one more thing is, and this is probably language that's everywhere now. But it's the hearing language here, one another clearly, that sort of thing. And I understand. So this is B on.
Where is it?
B, rule six, B, 6.2B. So it's talking about how you need to hear one another clearly. And yes, there is a J that says that these provisions can be modified, but to be proactive in an equity sense, I wonder if there is other language that could be added that is like hearing or some other accommodation that's normalizes it instead of an exception.
I thought this was just for virtual platforms.
But it might be communicate clearly instead of hearing.
It is, but if somebody can't hear, then perhaps they have another tool in order to accommodate.
I think the term now is just everyone has an opportunity to participate, however that happens.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Okay.
Are we gonna do without you?
Communication, how about those of us who can't spell? That's not fair either.
You're right. It's not, it's not.
It's just so you know.
So I think it needs some edits. So I think we'll need to bring this back the next meeting. And then for tonight, how would we handle that?
You can, I mean, you can edit in between first and second.
Well, so there's a couple of things, like I, I think we need to really consider what that language is for the virtual meeting. And then it also needs to be changed in all of our other rules that have that provision, which includes, I think, the council rules, so.
In a rush, I think we should take our time with it, because I did notice a few things too. And the council has adapted virtual hearing procedures. And we probably want everyone following the same sort of system.
We want to pull it off the night meeting?
In, I mean, is there a rush to get this in place? Then I would suggest we do, yeah.
Bring it back when everyone's off.
We go.
And you have at it.
Work for us.
You have a bunch of stuff to do.
Sorry, it's, the rest of the meeting won't be that great.
Public projects update.
We don't, it was only adoption of the rules, but we were getting your feedback on, so we have your feedback and we will bring them back corrected and then we'll post them. So there's nothing to pull for the night meeting. Okay.
Sweet. Hi. You guys color coordinate tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll start with that.
Read, read for engineer.
The public outreach that's going on so far, if anyone has additions, questions, concerns, and then Chris can talk to you about the roundabout.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I want to make sure that as we're outreach, we're giving a reason why we're doing everything at the same time. Because that's the one thing I've heard.
Why are we scheduling it all?
Why is everything, yeah, why? And I think it's very easy to say that, you know, Watson is part of the plan with parking structure. And we've committed to seed out it will get done this year. Coin Valley needs to be done because it's in a floodplain and the Army Corps is telling us we have to get it done this year. Main Street's in terrible shape. It needs to be done this year. I mean, I think everything that we're doing has legitimate, you know, really legitimate reasons that we couldn't, can't push any of this off. The public doesn't know that. So just doing scheduling stuff. I think we need a broader narrative about.
It's a good point, what we're doing.
Tried to cover that in the background of the dropdowns, but I can elevate that. I mean, how in your face do you want it to be? Do you want me to take pictures of potholes on Main Street? Be like, this is why we're paving Main Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, summed it up pretty well when we're saying, you know, that it, the, the culvert.
Corporate engineer says we have to do it.
Yeah, and we're risking flooding downstream housing developments, we just.
But a lot of people didn't even know that. You know, they thought it was, you know, they thought it was tied to the, that river park that blew out. I mean, they had no idea that the two were related.
Okay.
I have an issue on this coin valley closing.
Yes.
Do, is there a mechanism, I worry, with egress from Peak Seven, if emergency egress, fire?
I spoke to Brian Boverd a few weeks ago.
Who's he?
He is the Sunwell County Emergency Manager. He's the head of all of that. He did not express any concerns if there were to be an evacuation. They would handle that at Barton where it hits airport and just direct people south on airport. So he is aware of it and is not concerned at this time.
How, so this is going to be like coming off of, coming off of, hey, you know, Peak Seven or whatever it's called. You know, then heading, if you had like heading towards the recycling center, this can be like a huge hole. I mean, there's no way we could create a quick fix temporary thing to get people out of there.
No, not to send a lot of vehicles on now.
No.
It will be, the detour would be through Valley Brook or Park Ave or around.
So you guys are on it.
Yeah, they could go the other way too.
What other?
There are two, up to PK.
Oh, yeah.
So there are still two.
There are multiple points that you, Chris, and yeah. We, we checked with the head of that and he was.
Good. How are you guys reaching out to the non-English speaking community?
Right now, we do have radio ads going on, London Web and Mix is our Spanish option. We are looking into translating the website, but I don't know if we can stand that up fast enough to really help. Do you have any other suggestions, flyers, or any other organizations I can go through? Radio is our.
Dreamers.
Mountain Dreamers. Mountain Dreamers and FERC are have really, I mean, we've kind of put a heavy burden on those two to help us with a lot of this communication. They've been pretty effective.
Can you shoot me a contact? Because I can give them my written. Translate for me and we can send it out.
Yeah, Carol is Mountain Dreamers and FERC is Brianna. I mean, and they have translators that we can hire.
Because I can just give them my written English document and they can switch it up to Spanish and we can post them both if that, we feel that's good.
See if it's just minor updates to the website, estates, anything changes. That's usually a pretty quick turnaround.
Carol's president of the board of Mountain Dreamers, so.
Limited. You've got one month. No, I'll still talk to them.
I'll cut neck with you and you can let me know who I should email those things for.
Okay.
Do them on Fridays if they could help us on Fridays, that'd be great. If not, we can get it updated different day. Okay.
There's a lot of those guys work, you know, man, I mean, I look at like, you know, all the light industrial in that area, you know, and there's a lot of non-English speakers that work on Continental Court.
We'll, we'll get that on the website.
And have we found a way through from CMC into the Continental Court?
I met with Ford, been talking to him. We're going to look at it when the snow melts. He actually has leased on some of that land where he has a parking lot. So we're going to see what it would take to make a connection through there, but we kind of need to wait for the snow to go away. And he and I are working together on a business specific sign package for both the Rec Path and Airport Road. He's volunteered to get with all the other businesses out there who want to participate, so we're not leaving anyone out. And then we'll work to make some custom signage.
Great.
That stood up by the end of April is where we're.
More we can do, just to help everybody out, I think the better off will be in the end.
I really like the idea of your website. One place where people can go and get all the, everything they need to know.
That's what we're gonna try to do, just point everyone there, because already we have different dates floating out on different documents because it changes so frequently. So that's what we'll do.
I think it's working. I've gotten a ton of questions.
Good.
I just tell everybody Shannon said we had to.
And then anyone can contact me directly, no problem at all.
And that would be interesting to see how many people are actually checking the website. There's a way.
I will just see if we can, I assume we can, because it's redirected back to our town website from the vanity URL, so.
That Chris can tell you. Anything else on that piece? Okay.
So I just had a couple of, the first one before we talk about the roundabout is, I wanted to highlight in the memo on the asphalt replacement and concrete replacement that we will be doing work on the French and Main Street intersection. So we'll still have traffic going through it, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware and okay with. There will be traffic impacts in that area. So there'll be a period of time where Park, French and Main all have traffic construction zones.
With that, we're trying to fix the valley dam.
No, but it's got to be done. So, I mean.
As long as we keep it in May, I mean, that's what we can do.
Yeah. And when will we have a better idea of when each block on Main and Ridge will, I know Ridge is only four days, so that's not a big deal. But do we know when those blocks will be closing?
So it's, I feel like honestly, it's plus or minus three to or four days. So I don't want to tell anyone too specifically. We know right when we're going to start watching to Wellington. If that goes like they think it's going to go, then we'll know when we're on the next one. But if we lose a day to snow or they get done quicker, we're, we're just going to keep rolling rather than sticking to a firm schedule.
I, I just would like the opportunity to allow businesses, just if they want to close, it'd be a great time to close when, you know, main in front of them is, is.
Torn up for four days, right?
But if, if you can't be more specific, then I guess that's a moot point, really.
Yeah, we'll know like two days ahead, because you'll be able to see when we've removed all the asphalt, prepped it. And then they start paving, then we'll move to the next block and do the same.
Even if it's a two day warning.
Yeah.
You warn these people, you know.
Okay.
We'll push out as close as we can, but I don't want to get too committed to dates.
Okay. So yeah, if you're okay with that, I'll talk about Watson next. One comment I wanted to add that wasn't in the memo is, we're asking for a $750,000 appropriation for it. And I wanted to clarify that, that does not include pedestrian improvements on the west side. We're holding off on that to coordinate with the BGV improvements. And so that wouldn't come until at least 2023, but as far as sidewalk improvements on that side, that would be an additional amount.
Okay.
And so with that is, the memo states, you know, the bids came in higher than what we had estimated. And so there's an additional $750,000 that we're asking for appropriation for the project.
It's actually lower than I thought.
Nice.
Good job, Chris.
We'll be hiring next year.
Not delaying it.
No, I know, we can't. We're not allowed to.
No, I'm saying.
Your last, the last act on council, you're gonna throw a monkey in the ranch.
I think it, yeah, no, get it done. Get her done.
One lane work.
Oh, yeah. And then also I want to mention on Watson, I think initially we had messaged that there'll be two lanes continuously throughout the project. There is one week at the end of April where we wouldn't have a detour in place, but there will be, need to be one lane closure. So it'd have flaggers stopping traffic for a few minutes at a time, letting traffic through. That's estimated. The first week, there'll be some little times as they're setting up barrier and shifting around that they would need to do it throughout the week. And then there's one week where we kind of fully throughout the day, they'd have it down to one lane and then back.
Which is next week, right?
Uh, so it'd be the week of April 25th. So next week they'll start on the 18th.
Next week would be great, since it's spring, very.
I'm thinking half the county would be gone.
Perfect.
Still have a good amount of ski traffic, no? I don't know.
Weekend.
One lane, but Columbine came to us and they think it's necessary to get this one section of storm sewer in.
Just detour people on the Main Street for the, for one of the ways, or is that, is it better to do it with flaggers?
So per CDOT guidance, the traffic volumes at that time, it would be better to do with flaggers, because it's showing that it wouldn't queue very bad, wouldn't back up. First, the detour we think would be more impactful.
Okay.
Yeah, the week of the 25th is when we expect to see the skier traffic go like this, because there, we're going to free parking.
Likely.
Likely in that, because there's just not going to be that many people, so.
It's the week after next week.
Just trying to see if there's anything else going on. I don't.
Welcome everyone back from spring break.
And Mark Truckee's birthday. We were gonna have, you know what, we were gonna do that huge party, but I guess we're not now.
Happy birthday, Mark.
Happy birthday, Mark.
All right. I have, I have a question. How hot, you, you know, with this, the town hall is lacking of curb cuts. We lost a curb cut in town hall. In other words, you can get on, like if you're in a accessible, you know, wheelchair, whatever, you can get in all the way to the east, you know, by the bank or all the way to the west, which kind of sometimes is kind of blocked by that town vehicle. And we used to have a curb cut right in the middle of, of the, you know, so you, so someone could go in.
Right in front of town hall, you're telling me?
Yeah, yeah, it could kind of go in.
We don't have one right in front of town hall.
No.
It's a curb now.
It's a curb.
There is a handicap spot just to the west of a few spaces there.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about to get the, if someone is in a, in a thing, you know, wheelchair or something. Or an e-bike to get, to get over the curb, you know, into town hall. Like I say, was, there used to be one right in town hall, so you just can go right over. And now it's, it's like all the way to the west or all the way to the east. Into the east, it's, it's in front of First Bank. I don't know, does that mean, I don't know how hot it is to create a curb cut.
The only tricky part out there is we have a lot of heated sidewalk, the old heated sidewalk. And then I put in some new with the parking structure, but there is a segment in between. We can add it.
There's little snows on all the time.
Oh, yeah.
The ice one, so that's also a problem.
Just be advised and, you know, take a look at it.
Take a look.
Yeah. Yeah, cool.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Yeah, for the people.
You are. Anything else?
Anything else from us, unless you have further questions?
Any questions about the dam or McCain undergrounding while we're here?
It'll be open, sorry, the tarn will be open for recreation. Are you saying October 23rd, 20, sorry, October 23rd?
2025.
Actually, the following summer.
Probably the following summer. I mean, I would love to get it open earlier in 23.
Okay.
But I can't guarantee we could.
James.
We had any, any more of the owners out there express concerns? Has there been any unexpected issues out there? Good.
Awesome.
We have yet to turn on the de-watering wells, but we are prepared to augment the homes closest.
Well done.
So far.
Eric, this is while they're here, just in case some question comes up, Shannon, I need to answer. It's not a town project, but we were discussing phase one of Milne. And we said, go back, get some good numbers for what could be done if we were to approve that phase one of Milne. They did come back and it's 1.37 is what phase one would cost. That's with a 20% contingency built in, so 213,000 of that is a contingency of that 1.37. They have, we put in the BHA capital budget for 22, 1.15. So, you know, we're gonna need a little over, you know, another 200,000 would have to, we'd have to appropriate to go in there if you wanted to pull the trigger on that. And let them do phase one.
They don't burn that contingency money, then it just would go back.
For what they, what we have budgeted, yeah, on there, so.
That, because I want to protect those, that building, those buildings.
Yeah.
So just stabilization of all the buildings.
It's a little, it kind of got, built a gut, right? It kind of, I think it didn't have any of the finishing out of the interiors, but it really kind of creates the exterior shell of those buildings.
The foundation work in there. That was a big piece of it. Yeah, that's a big part of the budget.
That would still allow them to continue to pursue grant opportunities for the completion of that. So I think, I mean, they have a local contractor that says that he can do it, but they need to know now.
I think we should do it because it's just going to be more expensive.
I'm in favor.
Absolutely.
Allowed to vote this.
I am. Tonight.
I'm completely in favor. What was the added cost of phasing it?
Oh, well, the mobility, I mean, you, we don't know that until they come back. I mean, you're gonna, for, I mean, he's probably not I mean, you're gonna, for, I mean, he's probably not a lot of mobilization, right? The way he works, I don't know that it's huge, but you might have another hundred grand or something if you were bringing somebody back on there. I don't even know that it's a. It's not even a question right now whether he could do the whole thing if we even said we were going to. So I think what he's done is he's been what he thinks to get phase one done this summer, so.
Yeah, I'm completely in favor and think we should keep nudging our lobbyists to make sure they're passing on grant opportunities.
I told Jerry too, they need to really be aggressive looking also. They can't just go after their normal. There, there's a lot of money out there. They really need to be looking.
So, uh, Mark, you got a note, we'll follow up with them and we'll let them move forward on this phase one. And I had Shannon kind of look at their stuff a little bit just to check. And she asked a few questions and I think we're comfortable from our perspective, they know what they're doing.
I think they're in good hands with that group.
Any other questions for? In public projects, all right. Thank you, Chris Shannon. Uh, mobility. Ability. I want to look both of you guys, huh?
The old guys on this end.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, as you can see in your packet, uh, traffic on the free ride or ridership on our free ride is strong for the month of March. Feeling really good about that. The month of April, it has dropped substantially. Hopefully everybody feels that around town, which I think is a kind of a little bit of relief on, on us as a service and our drivers. So, uh, and us as locals, I believe. Other than that, uh, we will be transitioning to our summer service plan one week earlier than I had mentioned in the last meeting. We're going to move to it this Sunday, uh, the 17th. That's in alignment with the summit stage, which I think is a good transition plan and it allows us to get the trolley back out there. So great, excited for that. Two other small things, uh, we are in the process of discovering the idea of allowing pet dogs on buses. We will come to you with a recommendation here in the next couple of weeks, but we're doing some discovery on. Where it works in our other similar communities. Uh, it's very popular in some large cities, but it doesn't work in some mountain communities. So we are working on kind of figuring that out from all the legal side and liability side, so.
You're talking like emotional support dogs?
Registered pet.
What have we gotten from the summer stage on there?
They, uh, they made the transition. They're very happy with it. Uh, it makes their drivers' jobs easier. They don't need to check to see if it's a service animal and they just basically let the dogs on. They haven't had any instances of issues, so.
You beat me to it because I was gonna bring that up.
Great.
Thank you.
That's exciting. I think that'll be a, a good change if we can get to.
I think our community will embrace that.
Yep, and, and it helps our sustainability goals, greenhouse gas, all of those things, uh, and getting people to trailheads. I think it's great, so. More to come on that. Last thing is, uh, in, yeah, in, in follow up to, uh, last week's discussion on the traffic counts. CDOT has willingly agreed to install a traffic counter on the south side of, uh, town on Highway nine there. Temporary, this will be a temporary version of it. It's a radar one. They do say it will count 100%. But the only downside to it is it's going to be on the north side of River Park Drive. So we'll get local traffic going in and out of, let's say, ski, skiing racket club. So it won't be perfect number, but it will be much better than what we have with that Blue River counter. That's only counting northbound, so.
They still create the traffic jam, so.
Move towards a permanent solution in the ground or?
They will, yep. Uh, we are working on that. We discussed it today and we're gonna look at putting two loops in the road, uh, which is the same one that we have at Tiger Road right now. The exact same model on the south side of River Park Drive here. They hope to do it this summer, but there's no guarantee just getting the product. So, uh, that one, um, while this first one's going to be free, no charge to us. We are gonna have to foot some money for the other one, which I think is, is a pretty reasonable number so far, so.
Nice job. That'll, I'm interested to see Smacker accounts himself.
Uh, what's the latest on masks?
Uh, April 18th, the end of day, it's supposed to expire. Uh, I am a little bit cautious that that's going to change. We don't have any update internally or from anything else that says otherwise. It does sound like it's gonna be a game bay decision, so we'll see.
How's hiring going?
Good. Uh, we are looking for 25 for the summer. We're at 22. It is the kind of that time of year where some people start to decide what's next in their life, you know, springtime. So, um, we may lose another one or two, but we're confident in being, being able to run our service, uh, as we've stated it, uh, moving forward. So, uh, we could be down to about 20 and be fine running it, so.
Anything else for mobility? All right, the east end of the table needs a break. We're gonna take quick, quick five.
Lolly gagging five.
That's what I wanted to curb cut for Dennis's chair.
Rapper says otherwise.
Or something you don't like very much.
Bunch of gougers. We're gonna ask 900, but we'll do you a favor.
Changes and what exactly that means. I love that you're looking at it to align with the town housing program criteria. But to qualify, I'm fully supportive of the change from live and or work in the upper blue. To work and serve Summit County. Is this for full time? Is it for both parents or one parent's? And how do you verify and define serving Summit County?
So, a lot of questions there. So, um, to qualify for four to. I'll, I'll hope I get them all. Um, to qualify for four or five days a week, both parents have to be working at least 30 hours. In the community. Um, so we request employee verification forms. We check through the application period. Um, we check paychecks and see how many hours are worked. And so that's all verified during the application period in mid-May.
So for part-time, is it sliding then? If you work part-time, you qualify for?
Less days.
Okay, so up to three days?
Yeah, three days and under. Did I answer all your questions?
We use it for housing too. So how do we do serving Summit County? How do we clarify?
A business located in, serving, if the product is available, like, um, they are in the service industry. You know, can you hire that person to do work in? Um, it's really just intended to eliminate somebody that.
That's great. I think those are really strong additions. Um, and I love reading in the memo that when we implement a county, countywide system, this will largely serve as the model. With that working group, were there any concerns or discussion items on any of these changes?
No, um, actually, we've been working with Frisco on this whole program. So, um, the county, uh, group met a week ago Friday, I think. And, um, very supportive of, of this kind of sliding scale. I think it's where they wanted to go anyway. So it works great if two of the jurisdictions go that direction. Back to the housing deed restriction, do two people have to be working? It's just one? Okay, so why are we saying that two people have to be working with childcare?
Take care of the kids if they weren't.
But what if one is working remote? I mean, as we're still adding the other one into.
They have to, they still have to work in the county.
This thing between three and four days, they're still eligible for three if only one.
No, I think eligible for. Both parents have to be working full time in order to be eligible for five days, four and five days a week. But I think what you're asking is, could we approve somebody where one parent was remote? One parent was working and serving Summit County. I think we'd be okay with that. You would be okay with that. It's because it's a, a support to the workforce. That's where it gets into that full time. So. I do have a comment about the remote employment. And I know that this is a bit anecdotal, but you can all like look for, for jobs right now. And I do think we are seeing something happen. Where I think a lot, the service industry or frontline workers, yes, their income is, is rising. But I would say that the, the desk jobs, that income, I'm not seeing as competitive. With other places and I, I don't know what we do about it. But I worry that because of this, some of our local workforce is being pushed. Into the remote atmosphere. I support this. I don't think that we should subsidize it by any means. But I just think that there's a dynamic going on right now where people are. These jobs aren't competing, like clearly our service industry, we're, we're talking about that all the time about how we need that to compete. But there is another sector, I'm just, and that's where remote jobs are competing. And so I think it's something to think about. I, again, in the future, I know, I'm going, I'm kind of handing this problem over. It doesn't affect us as long as if one remote person and another person is serving the. I think that's, I think that's plenty fair. I think that's fine, but it's just something to think about because.
You saying that the wages are pushing people to work remotely?
They're not as competitive, I would say. I would say that they're not.
Remote pay isn't as competitive?
Is more competitive. So like if you were, like, I've seen jobs where. They're paying the same as like, you know, they're, they're paying similar, it's that 20, 24 hour. You know, and, and these are, again, they're, these are like, I don't know, in development or in, you know, just, again, desk jobs. They're, they're not competing with the remote. So I kind of feel like there's this dynamic that's starting. People are, sorry, Todd, turning to real estate. Like turning to other, turning to other professions that are not really what we're going for here, um, that we're trying to support. So anyway, it's just something to think about and, and as we're doing this, like this is all well and good. But I think that there's another force at play that might not be getting our community working here.
Aaron, I think your point might be a good one and I think it plays back to the discussion of a couple meetings ago. When I stayed after my surgery and they cut me off, I couldn't speak. But, um, huh?
Thought you were going down.
But, um, it, you know, when we were talking about, um, our team here at the town of Breck and, and pay and what we should do and everything. And, you know, and, you know, I think that discussion is gonna continue. And I think, you know, i- it's my personal feeling that we need to lead. You know, we need to lead, we need to invest in our staff and we, we need to, um. Get back to being a premier employer in the county and, and lead this process of, of, uh.
And I think that, you know, what we're seeing with the service industry, that competition is happening.
Yes.
I think we'll see it, I think, but I'm not sure. So I, just to have on your radar, as we're, you know, saying, okay, no, we're not covering remote employment, all of that. And we also have to think about how we are, you know, what you, to your point before, about how we're creating community for those remote people. Because we do need them to volunteer and give back and all that stuff. But anyway, I do support this.
I mean, the difficulty with that is, if you're remote and working for a company that's located in Summit County, I support it. But if you're working for a remote company that's anywhere else in the country and creating value for New York City. You shouldn't be taking treasure from this town to support.
No.
You living here. So I, I draw a really bright line between where that company's located. And I do not support, I do not support funding childcare for people that decide to move here. And work for a company that's not located here.
But are you okay with the one parent?
Not really, but I'm okay with it because the committee's okay with it. But personally, I would not. If you asked me before they had decided on this, I would have said no.
But I think there's a ton of people who the way they make it work is by one of the parents being a remote worker.
Yeah, I get, and I get that.
Which I think there's on the other side, I think there's things that can be done.
I'm not saying no to it, but. The, the, the value, the money that gets put into this program. Comes from a very specific place and it's not feeding into that, so.
And I, I agree with Eric and I think the next step is really working with the centers to how we prioritize the waitlist. I think that's the second.
And just to clarify, the centers did do that. They did clarify where they're working. And it was basically in the onset of the pandemic is when they started tracking that and they were giving slots to families that were in and serving the community. So that was done and this, um, clarification in the parameters is really just to make sure we're double backing on it, really. That we don't have anybody in the program that is a full remote family currently.
I have a much diff, much more difficult issue. The AMI thing just doesn't really, we've, Lori and I have talked about this a hundred times. AMI means pretty much nothing to anybody except for the people that understand. Because it's so different for how many people are in your house. So you use that as your parameter. At some point, as we report this stuff out, we need to, I, maybe it's just me, I want to understand more what that is. You know, if you make $20 an hour, where are you? We don't, I, I feel like we need another reporting mechanism or metric to make it easier for. The council and the community to understand who we're supporting. To what level we're supporting them. You know, you can say $173,000 for a family of four. Honestly, that doesn't mean a whole lot to me. I don't really know who, who is that, what? So I, and I don't, I'm not telling you how to do this. I'm just saying at some point, I'd like to see us come up with something. That makes more sense, honestly. Because really, and again, Lori and I have spoke about this before, AMI is really not tied to what we do up here in Summit County. AMI is tied to different parts of the, of the country. So I don't really think AMI's work to begin with. I'd like to see something that makes more sense. Does that make sense to any of you?
Well.
I, I like, I think you hit the note, when, when you said, I'd like to find out, let's say, what is, was 60%, what AMI is per hour. Yeah, that'd be interesting to me, you know, maybe this is 20, $20, $30 an hour, is that 70% of AMI?
Bucks an hour, right?
What's that?
Part of that is that we're looking at the max. So when you get into 20 to $30 an hour, they're not close to that max. That, the max is what would preclude somebody from being included in the program. So I think probably the easiest way to answer that without diverting from AMI would be to put a range. So from a family of two, because they'd have to at least be that, up to a family of four, saying this is the range as a maximum. Where you would max out of the program and not be.
That'd be great, that just any.
It to hourly, but I think it might not translate too well to most of the people that would be in the program.
Or yearly would be interesting as well.
That's what that is. That's the, that's the annual, the 173 or 178.
Challenge with hourly is, is so many of the service industry people don't, don't work 2,000 hours a year.
No, I know, I know. But you know, when people, I mean, really this comes from when people say, I don't understand why you're subsidizing childcare. I know why we subsidize childcare. I have difficulty making the argument. That 180% of the AMI should get childcare. Because it's difficult for me to understand what that is, what are those jobs? You, you know what I mean? That, that is really, it's a, it's a hard thing and I want to, I want to be as supportive of the program when I'm talking to the public. It, it, it's difficult. This is not your problem, but I'm asking you to find me a solution.
Just take it out because at some point, right, like, isn't, isn't the point because it's, it's so nominal after a certain amount? So like, if you take out AMI, you could say if you need more than X amount of dollars. Then we'll subsidize that to hit the percentages, right? Like, I don't even know if AMI needs to be included, right?
Yeah, so just use the percentages instead of a cap.
Well, I mean, in the, yeah, 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 actually, yeah.
Cause you do max out at some point, no matter what you make.
Where you max out.
But the cap would be like if it's less than X amount of dollar, like if, if you. We subsidize more than X amount of dollars, right? Like it, we hit that percentage and then, but if it's X amount of dollars or less, then you don't get it.
I think the percentage, trying to have the family expenditure on childcare be within that range of, of percentage is probably.
I think the percentage, trying to have the family expenditure on childcare be within that range of of percentage is probably a bigger. Part of the program than talking about the AMI max. The AMI max has always been part of the application. It's always been you have to. Say whether you make over that amount or not. Um, but really, we're trying to make sure that people spend less than, you know, X percentage based if we go to this new program on a sliding scale. So we're looking at, you know, seven or eight percent up to 20%. So once people are in a higher. Pay range, then they're going to have less support from the town. But I think that's the bigger part of the story.
Yeah, that's a better part of the story.
Low lower income families will get more support, higher income families will get less support, but still some. And at some point, whatever you make, you you max out.
Right? Like, it's not, you're not going to give them like a hundred bucks or whatever.
When you look at our childcare costs, and so two kids in care, full time, 40 grand. You know, that's still 20% of 200,000.
Right.
See this, um, say, say there's a childcare facility with 100, 100 uh spaces, right? And. If if all of a sudden there's more people that are willing to pay retail. Does that lower the amount of opportunity for people that want to get their child in that needs subsidies?
No, the center stays whole with all of the programs in Summit County.
Say that again.
The center will stay whole. So no matter how how a childcare, how a child is funded for their day there for in care. Um, it pays the center exactly the same as what a person not receiving any extra funding would.
No, what? Yeah, okay. And that I'm I'm happy to hear that. But what I what I worry is with all these remote workers. If if, you know, they they get their bucks up, they get a lot of dough, and I worry that they can just say, you know. We'll pay retail. And that, you know, that would behoove the childcare center. Do we have a formula to say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna subsidize 40% of the of the families?
No, there's no, there's no formula. I mean, we subsidize anyone that qualifies and meets the parameters of the program. Obviously, there's other funding sources in Summit County like SBK and CCAP and Early Head Start.
So the so the.
What Jeffrey's getting to though is is it's the list. You get on the list in order, not by how much you pay, but when you got on the list. All right.
Party.
When you get on the list, where you live, where you work. Um, if you have a sibling at the center, if you sit on the board.
Okay, so there's different criteria.
Each each center has kind of follow suit with their parameters and they track that.
So you should put it, get, put your name on the list. Can you do it before you have a child that they just put on?
Most people do.
Oh, really? Just when you put on romantic music?
Thinking of having a child?
So.
When you light a candle, you call it.
When you let, yeah, okay.
Great. Any other, any other questions?
Good.
All right. Thank you. Great work. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is so unbelievably complex. And I don't think people realize how complex it is from figuring it out to how many kids to what's going on. It's it's incredible. So thank you.
Unbelievably important, too, even those of us that are barren.
Aaron, that's different. Uh, let's see. Committee reports, we had, uh, do you have more?
We.
Yeah, housing, yeah.
We had housing minutes from our March meeting in the packet. So if there were any questions on that, most items we've spoken about. If you have any questions.
Tell you what, we spent a lot of time today looking at this, um. You know, the scorecard. What are we calling it, Lauren?
Report card. Yeah, I mean, we we've set a very ambitious goal in our blueprint, and so. Um, we think it's important to be going back to the committee and to you all to show how we're making progress on that. So we called a report card. Um, and so we went through that today and talked about some of the things that have changed in the last month, but we'll do this monthly. Um, so the committee and the council should be up to date in terms of progress on all of the list of items that are in our um blueprint.
It's a robust tool. Yeah, I think can be very useful internally and externally.
You know what would be great to have is two numbers. How many, what have we created? And how much it costs? Because we said 50 million for 1,000, 50 million, we're going to create 300 million out of for 1,000 units. That would be the reporting metric, you know? So in the last six months, we've created 25 units and it's cost us X. I think that would be great.
Just remember, it's going to be skewed from time to time because when we sell some of our buy downs. We might have positive numbers in what it costs as opposed to negative.
Yeah, right.
So just just beware.
Those are the numbers that we've talked about over the next five years. I'd it'd be nice for stuff to tie back to those two numbers.
Yeah. Yeah. We did get a little bit into that because of the buy down, the cost of the buy downs has definitely gone up. Um, so we noted that in the report this time. Um, I think it's gone from like 345 per bedroom to over 400 per bedroom on the. Cost to acquire a buy down, but that doesn't take into account that we're going to sell it. And really, all that matters at the end of the day is the gap.
Right.
Um, so yeah, we can figure a way to incorporate the amount of investment per the unit produced into our. Hopefully, report, but the report also, in addition to just number of units, there are so many other things that are going on in terms of. You know, getting our guidelines in place, getting everything scanned, getting ready paper, paper files, compliance. So there's a lot. I mean, I think there's probably 50 tasks in addition to the new construction.
I almost think it'd be more useful to look at that number biannally or quarterly at most. If you look at it too micro.
Yeah.
As Laurie said, there's so much else going on and and the buy downs really skew it. Um, right now, we're sitting on. A lot of units that we. We want to sell, but we have employees in them. And when those leases are up in in some of our projects open, we're going to move some folks into our newer projects and then sell these units.
But those always count as units. Because we bought them and put restrictions on them. So we.
Absolutely. But they were super expensive right now till we sell them. Super expensive. So I think just not too, I totally get what you're saying and agree. But I don't think we want to look at it too micro. I think we want to look at it over over a little longer period.
That's that's fine, too.
But you could have a line of like expected.
Revenue.
Revenue. Thank you. Revenue back. You know, like I thi- I think that would be interesting to see too. Yeah.
Anything else on housing?
I just, I I don't want to put too much on. I want these guys doing the work and not doing too much reporting. I mean, I I was very impressed with this level of reporting now. It's, uh, I mean, it it is a robust.
Well, and I think that's sort of what I'm getting to, Dick.
Yeah.
We need, we need very boiled down numbers for the public because we publicly stated. This program, you know, we didn't talk about all the other things you do. We talked about. I mean, really, we talked about unit creation. That's what we talked about. That's the number. We need to sort of. Keep telling people, look, this is where we're at, where we've created.
Yeah.
X amount.
And that'll be for the communication people because, you know, in, I mean, I think this tool is is an internal tool as much as an external tool. We've got so many balls in the air in this. This um. Department that I think this tool is is necessary internally, and I think it's going to be very useful.
Yeah, relative to our target for buy downs, we're doing great. You know, we actually upped our, you know, target for buy downs to, I think it's 24 a year this year when we've been averaging eight a year. We're already at nine this year so far, but the cost per unit definitely, since we haven't flipped them, we don't know what the ultimate cost we have our target. Um, but on the other side, looking at this tool, we saw how housing helps is falling short of the target. Um, you know, so that tells us we need to do some marketing and outreach, so we'll be able to adjust based on what comes out of measuring our progress.
Yeah.
Cool.
But I I think when we get a communications person, we start really pushing this out. That I I hear what you're saying that I agree. Keep it simple.
Keep it simple. All right. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Committee reports, we had, uh. Police advisory, any questions? You still on today's day?
Yeah, I'm on those.
They need to hire some people.
Carrie Ballmer's still there.
Carrie is there too.
Events committee, any questions on the meeting? Anything, anything? Oh, no, okay.
Trigby's event was awesome.
Trigby's event was awesome last night.
We did have a, uh, Dick and I handed out scholarships and that's a committee. It's called grants. And yeah, and uh, it was very, it was very heartfelt. The Dick was tearing up the whole night.
I was. Because I've known all these kids.
Could have been the pain toes, but uh, but yeah, it was really, it was really nice and and it made us, you know, kind of proud to be a. Part of the community and and kind of helping some of these kids.
That's phenomenal.
Cool.
Nice work.
Yeah.
All right. And Open Space Master Plan update. Scott Reed.
I'm a stand in this week for Ann, but just to follow up from um, meeting a couple weeks ago. I think from DTJ, they heard your input from from council as well as from Bosak. And at this point, the public, sort of the broad public input element of this whole plan is is at its conclusion. There's going to be, at this point, they're drafting the actual document itself. They believe the draft will be available by 4/20, so April 20th, which is next Wednesday. Um, and we'll submit it to both Bosak and Council, so everyone will have a chance to review it. Bosak is expected to discuss it. It's the primary, pretty much only discussion. I shouldn't say only, but. Really the main focus of discussion on the Bosak meeting on the 25th. So that'll be the next time that Bosak has a chance to read through it and give their input. Um, as I understand it, at this point, there's going to be two parts to the to the plan. I've not seen it, but the beginning will be kind of an executive summary. And there'll be a number of appendices to back up the. Kind of the the content of the of the executive summary. Uh, let's see. So once Bosak has a review on the 25th. Um, and sort of see what their feedback is. The plan is to really, um, we want them fully on board consensus, like this is recommended. Yes, this is a document that we want, so we'll see what time that takes. Um, the hope is that, well, certainly, obviously, council members are welcome to attend. Our hybrid meeting on the 25th. You can either tune in or or join us here in this in this space on the 25th to talk. Through that, that'd be great. Um, but ultimately, our goal is to bring it back to council on May 24th. That's currently the calendar that we're on. So it gives us about a month to get everything kind of squared away. If we need to do a special meeting in there, we can do that, buys us a little bit of time. Uh, but DTJ is scheduled to present to you all on the 24th of May, and that'll be when we kind of first kind of review of council. If you will, on a work session basis of the of the actual document. And then, of course, I should mention that our um. Our Open Space Open House is on May 23rd. Um, it will not be focused on the DTJ work on the master plan. Actually, we'll be focused a little bit on McCain. In terms of visioning what McCain's going to look like, at least the 16 acres that are part of the McCain parcel now, that'll be a lot of what the focus is beyond what we usually do at our at our open house for Open Space. Um, so again, just put that on your calendars if you can, um, but otherwise. Um, that's where we are at this point. Any questions or concerns or thoughts? I welcome that.
Kelly.
Can we get um, open space meeting minutes in our packets? Because there were a lot of great conversations that went on at Bosak, and I know I attended, but I don't think. Anyone else did besides Aaron. Is that too much of a? I don't know if anyone takes minutes in that or.
At Bosak?
Yeah.
Very, very detailed minutes. I thought they were already included in your pack.
We got them like one week. One time, like.
It was last, last time.
Yeah, we did get them last time, but we don't normally.
I don't, it got lost somewhere where I didn't follow up on it. So I apologize for that. But we do, I mean, most committees, we show the minutes show up in council, but.
I think just events. And events.
We do events because we've had.
And childcare. We do them.
Childcare, housing.
Most committees.
Maybe just for now, while we're doing this vision and everything, it would be very useful.
Well, and I was actually hoping to see it in this one because of that McCain discussion. I thought um. I thought we would have a little bit more of a discussion because I definitely think this council would. Be interested to see some of the options. And so now, because there weren't minutes in here, then the council doesn't really know about like the different. Options for. You know, trails and things like that going through. Fourth Monday.
Okay, um, we, I could certainly get those to Peyton and have them shipped to you.
That'd be great.
We have them in draft form, so there were some comments at the last meeting about some of the details of some of those minutes, and so they're still in draft form. So. Um, we'd be happy to send this to you. They're already available. We just need to get them in your hands. So.
Only other thing, just um. For our Bosak committee, I would love to make sure the consultant gets it to them on the 20th, so they do have plenty of time to review before the meeting.
Yeah, we've we've given them that deadline, and I think they're going to use every every minute of the deadline. Writing right now and told them that. Our packet is due, you know, we won't give them the same thing. We want to give them at least five days to get a chance to review and respond. So. Yes, and like I said, it'll come to you all as well. So if you have comments at that point, that's very valuable to us if you, you know, versus holding on to them until 24th of May, at which point. It's a little bit harder for us to make everything happen. So if you can. Get those comments to us, we we appreciate it. We'll pass one.
Cool.
I have a couple of questions. The May Open House. Will you be talking about the um, trails? Like, like you normally do too?
Yes.
No, May, yeah.
May 23rd.
Yep.
We we typically do, like, we'll do multiple boards, but we'll have one that talks about our trail projects for the year.
Okay.
Volunteer consensus, which are broader than just trail projects, and then we'll probably talk about. Uh, some of our cucumber, among other topics. So typically, we have boards around the room to kind of.
Okay.
Promote conversation, but trails are definitely part of it.
It's like the normal thing, but also McCain.
And I think, yes, I think because a lot of what we found when we applied, if you recall, for some of the um, grants we didn't get. Because we weren't doing enough public input in the broad sense.
Ah, okay.
So when we were anticipating applying for some grant funding for some of the McCain work, specifically the rec path. We want to make sure that we have, you know, solid. Public input on that specific topic so that we can, we can show that to the grant funders.
Okay, great. The other comment is, so since. Since I'm hearing, I know we've gotten over this before too, so I apologize, but since Bosak. Will be reviewing it, putting in their input. And then DTJ makes the changes, right? And then it goes to council. Just as a recommendation. If Bosak comes back with some strong commenting or strong ideas or whatever. It probably would be good. For those to be bulleted and added. Like and given to council in case. There's. Just just for council to know, like, hey, this was a recommendation of Bosak versus a recommendation of DTJ or something like that. I mean, not. Like high level ideas, just because from listening to DTJ's meeting with council and DTJ's meeting with Bosak. You know, there were, as we've discussed, there were some different thoughts and and different viewpoints, and so. That might, that just might be helpful to council to see like, okay, this was, this was a viewpoint of Bosak, or this is something that Bosak felt strongly about.
Yeah, I mean, the challenge, I think, throughout this has been that everyone has a different view of what they expect out of this document. So I don't think it'll be Bosak consensus. I mean, unless there's something that everyone agrees upon. But I think certainly individuals will capture that in the minutes, which will will absolutely capture.
And that's perfect. Yeah.
Kind of do a dictation.
Yeah.
So, you know, as we go back and look at some of the minute comments that we had from the last meeting, we have a document that. That Zara sits over here and pretty much captures every comment, and then she. Um, tries to turn it into something a little more legible. Understandable in terms of. Content, but try to capture the essence of those comments. And so I think that's where we'll find those specifics about.
Yeah.
What what the specific issues were, and I think, I think she does a pretty good job of capturing those. So but we'll do the best we can.
No, that and that works. I guess that's just something for this group to pay attention to. If you're, if you're seeing a document that's gone through DTJ and then gone through Bosak, you'll know that. Some of it's coming from DTJ and some of it might be coming from Bosak.
Okay. Um, again, we are planning to record those meetings, so you can go back and watch them if you like as well, uh, but the minutes will certainly capture the. The essence of the comment. But um, like I said, the 25th of this month, Bosak will be kind of sinking their teeth into that document. So if you want to watch it. Before or after, sorry, during or after the actual meeting.
Watch it before.
Reading up there? Yeah, so, yeah. We'll get it to you guys as well. So like I said, if you have comments and you want to put them in an email, that's an easy way for you to do the. The brain dump and get it off your plate. That that's certainly helps us getting again, getting those edits done before it gets to Bosak and back to you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Make up 15 minutes. CMC Housing, Student Housing Development.
Yeah. Well, 25th of May.
No, the 20th.
Bosak's the 25th.
Erica, I wanted to make an introduction here. Um. This is Sarah Crump, our newest planner.
That's the last meeting. Okay.
Oh, I missed that meeting.
Self.
Yeah.
She just sat up here and did a great job, just saying, we were very impressed.
Probably what you didn't know, or maybe you do, some of you know, she's been really helpful in pulling all the data together for the tourism task force.
Oh, sweet.
And also she's in charge of the taking all the data for the congestion. Issue that we're dealing with. So both of those.
Great. Thanks, Sarah.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, you have the plans for the CMC student housing development in your packet. Um, I'll give a more formal, detailed presentation this evening for the MOU signed in 2007. We have to have a public hearing. For CMC projects on their campus, but if you have any questions or comments now, we can answer those for you.
Did they seem like they were going to add some more storage when you guys, when the planning commission suggested that?
It didn't seem like they were going to adjust their plans. Um, they did consider it and said perhaps, but. as far as the building, I don't think they were considering changing it. They may add a bike storage on the exterior.
Yeah, and they did say that they may have some extra storage next door at Denton Commons if they might be able to allow.
I don't think there is.
And it's utilized.
Great, thanks.
Other questions? All right, thank you.
See you today.
See you this evening. Parking code update.
Hi, everyone. You also don't have to introduce me.
I know.
Okay.
I couldn't do that again.
Hi, good evening.
Everyone, Steffi Shrek. I'm here to present, this is the work session for parking code update. I don't want to get too into the weeds. Everything's really in your packet. But just for a little background, we're really just looking for your feedback on the code, the proposed code amendments. The Planning Commission did have a work session in a hearing more recently, and they approved the changes. We provided them with different methods and then kind of narrowed it down that way. So we're presenting to you the methods we all kind of decided on. Quick background, this was a top ten list in the June twenty twenty one joint meeting. Really, goal is just to reduce unnecessary parking, promote our plans, the Destination and Management Plan, the Sustainable Rec Plan, the existing one, which is getting updated. It's really just, you know, enhancing town goals of less cars, promoting transit walkability, decreasing impervious surfaces. Excessive parking leads to increased housing costs, induces traffic, things like that. So staff and the commission think that these parking caps and then shared parking agreements are a beneficial way to acknowledge that some parking is necessary, but kind of reducing too much parking and how that can be disadvantageous. So for parking maximums, we kind of started with a range of a hundred and five, based off the minimum. We started a hundred and five percent to a hundred and twenty percent. That was kind of what our research showed. And we kind of landed in the middle that a hundred and ten percent of the minimum was most reasonable. So that would limit parking in the service area. So mainly the downtown core, we decided the best was that the maximum would be the minimum, so no additional parking is allowed in the service area. So whatever your minimum requirement is, that's what you, that's your maximum. And that's for all uses. And then for outside to the service area, so mainly outside the historic district for commercial uses, which includes multifamily residential, the maximum would be a hundred percent, a hundred and ten percent of the minimum. So in the code changes, those numbers look kind of small, but when you have the bigger developments or the bigger housing complexes, things like that, those numbers kind of work a little better than the examples really shown in the code. And then for, we decided that for residential outside the historic district, just for single family duplexes and ADUs, there's no maximum limit. Staff and the commission didn't really see that as an issue. We already have code that regulates impervious, you know, too much disturbance, things like that. So that's parking maximums. For shared parking, obviously, this has been big interest for the council, the commission developers, things like that. So staff really decided that rather than have that within our code, it gets really complex that way. We already have a pretty complex code, Eric smiling. So we decided that this would be dependent on a third party expert that would provide a study similar to like a traffic impact study, things like that. So we do have eligibility for it. And then, as well as what the actual study needs to include, so it needs to describe the feasibility between the two uses, the timing, the parking variations for peak parking based on month, hour, day of the week for the two uses, and then provide the shared parking proposal. So then the applicant would submit this staff that would review as well as the town engineer. And then that would then be reviewed by the Planning Commission, so the Planning Commission would get a final approval of that. That then gets recorded with the county. And then if there's any, you know, situations of use changes or ownership changes that affect it, we have opportunities to review it once again. The examples for parking maximums, there's not a lot in the state. I just kind of wanted to throw that out. But shared parking is used Summit County is working on that right now. Aspen has shared parking, Park City has shared parking. So there's kind of more examples of that comparable to us. So that's kind of the brief overview. I'm happy to take questions or feedback if you like the idea, if you want different ideas.
Questions? Comments?
That was a really great presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too fast.
I just want to be super sensitive to how we bet and how we select the consultants. You know, I, they need to be neutral.
Well, wouldn't the, wouldn't the applicant hire the consultant? We wouldn't have anything to do with that.
I know, but that that concerns me, because some of the previous consultants that applicants have hired have not always given us the best studies.
Yeah, our code refers, on another section of code, it's coded as a qualified parking consultant. So that's kind of how we use that same language. It's similar to what we do for like energy audits, things like that. They just have to be qualified.
If we don't want to put language in like a, a qualified parking consultant approved by talent, by, by the town planning director. Just to give us, you know, hey, these, these folks didn't give us very good report last time. We're not using them yet. Just give us the opportunity to approve it.
The applicant itself.
I mean, yeah. It's, it feels like it's just gonna be so obvious.
Yeah.
I mean, if you have two restaurants side by side and they say, we're gonna, we're both open these hours and we're gonna do shared parking, you're gonna go, huh?
Yeah.
But when you've got opposite type businesses in that, I don't know.
I agree. I, I mean, I agree. I just, but from past experience, I think I want to have that ability to approve.
Yeah, that's fine. Anything else? I think this is great. This is exactly.
Yeah, I do, too.
Exactly what I think we were looking for. So, well done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Great, all right. Entrata Housing Proposal. Mr. Dudik.
Front row, in case there's any questions.
Yeah.
Safe distance away.
Okay, thanks, Helen. Alrighty. So the Entrata Housing topic was before you, back in January, when Perkins Grand Vacations was before you. You had expressed interest in that housing site and kind of forward that project to the Planning Commission for a fit test. So we took that to them last week, actually. And the site plan is generally the same as what was approved under the Summit County jurisdiction under for Marty Getz for the commercial property. And there was a few differences that we saw, which was a reduction in the building footprint by seventy square feet, a change from gable roof forms to lower flat roof forms. A third level garden level was added. Around twelve thousand square feet was added to the project, according to the pre-annexation agreement comparison. And it now consists of sixty six studio units for workforce housing. So the, we took this to the Planning Commission, you know, asking them if there was reasonable waivers to the development code, does it fit on the site? We reviewed that with them, and generally, they were pretty supportive of the project. The land use, they were supportive of workforce housing there. Although in our development code, we would have to wave points most likely. The density and mass is the biggest component, as well as building height, and the density proposed and the mass are just, you know, require, I think it was negative thirty points for each density and mass. So you're not going to be able to overcome those points in our development code process. So they would definitely need some waivers to that to make this project happen. The building height as well would be coming in at negative ten points, even if they took the Planning Commission's suggestion of lowering that shed roof form two to three feet. They would still need that, probably need that waiver. One of the reasons being that because it is a project that's planned to fulfill required workforce housing under our policy twenty four A in the future, we, they would not be receiving the positive ten points they typically would receive. So that those points that are typically available would not be in this case. The, one of the main issues is the access and circulation that was identified by staff in the commission. And we had concerns just internally on the site. There's a there's a one way on the north side. You've got circulation all throughout the site, but it pinch points up here on the north side. And then exterior to the site with the two access points on Huron and in the highway, as well as some pedestrian flow concerns. We're still also waiting for the traffic study to come in, so we have not had the ability to review that, which will be a multimodal traffic study, so it'll include the vehicles, the bus, and the pedestrians as well. So we are waiting for that analysis. The applicant and their narrative that they submitted did, did offer to eventually build out the sidewalk that's existing to the bus stop from the corner of Huron up to the bus stop here, all the way up to Breckin along the highway, which would definitely improve circulation, but there's a lot of gray change, actually. So they're in railroad ties and things like that, that they would have to get a plan for. So that could potentially be a good public benefit piece, too, if the council wanted to consider that in the agreement. But generally, the site is, we feel like it is a bit over programmed here. And that, of course, is due to the density that's being proposed, but it is, you know, pinching, there's probably some wiggle room they can do with working with the site to free up some of the parking, the landscapes, no storage in open space. And so you'll find kind of detailed Planning Commission comments that were in your Planning Commission minutes in your packet for your review, and I'm happy to go into any of that in more detail. But we think that we can address a lot of those site issues related to open space and landscaping, snowstack in the planning process with the applicant and those, address those points in the development permit review. And they don't necessarily need to be part of the development agreement. The last issue that we wanted to bring up that is not in your memo is the TDR issue with the applicant. And this, as I mentioned, obviously, it's over density. It's over density by about four point five five SFEs. And that is going to equate to dollar wise, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that would be the SFE amount for TDRs, so that would be another discussion point. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Questions? What is the benefit of a sidewalk to Breckin? I mean, who walks there?
Well, I think that there, I mean, there are people who walk through the site to the bus stop.
Well, especially if the bus stop gets moved up.
Oh, the, okay, so also, the bus stop isn't going to be in its regular place. It's going to be moved up to this north.
Yeah, because of the traffic studies not in.
Okay. Other questions?
So from the first time we saw it, Mike, they, so we're going with the max unit, because I think we were looking at a range with the first time we saw it, I think it was sixty to seventy or something. We like that better. And my, looks to me like there's no, is there store, any storage units for toys and stuff for these guys?
Yeah, Mike Dudik, Reckoner's Grand Vacations, for the record, yes. The garden level adds, as Julia said, a little around twelve thousand square feet to the project. The footprint of the building is reduced from what the county approved. But we're going down, you know, to add the garden. The subterranean, the dark part of that space turns into storage. So if, if roughly the, the half of the building that is to the south is dark because of the grade, and the half is the north has units in it. And that garden level puts in, puts into motion these height, density and mass issues, because the building height, if from a USGS standpoint, the glass ceiling, it's not gotten higher, it's in fact gotten lower. But the point where the town measures it has gone down, which makes it over height. And it also, that garden level added the extra density and mass, which makes it turn into minus thirty for height, thirty for, I'm sorry, minus ten for height, minus thirty for density, minus thirty for mass. And there was minus four in the land use district. As Julia said, I'm certainly willing to work with the town on the real planning elements to this, the minus seventy four points between height, density, mass and land use. If those don't go away, we can't do it. But the other things like open space, those kind of things that get resolved in planning, that that should be fair game, right? But the other things, we want to do it, we got to make the seventy four go away in an agreement.
So all of the units have some kind of storage for bikes and skis and?
Well, that's one of the reasons why we have the, the extra height that Julie was talking about, so there's extra storage inside the unit, too. You create a greater floor to ceiling height inside the unit, which creates some, they're four hundred and twenty square foot units. So you have to maximize every square foot in order to get the storage you want. And so there's storage, I, Dick, I don't have a plan that says each unit has, you know, ten square feet of storage in a cage in the basement. That's, we're not there yet. Obviously, we want to make it.
So, Dick, if you look on the lower level.
Fourteen hundred square feet of storage, according to Sam.
Two larger sections here on the ends, that's unit storage, able to do unit storage, and my understanding is that that will meet the five percent that's required in the code.
And that's the fourteen hundred square feet.
Yeah, between those two spaces. There it looks like three spaces.
Sam, Sam agrees, and I didn't know better, so I'm glad my kid's here to help.
Thanks, Sam.
I'm generally supportive and you know, obviously, we have a lot of things to negotiate in a development agreement, but I think I'm generally supportive. I want to get the project right. You know, is it sixty six, or is it sixty two, or is it sixty four? I want to make sure we get it right, but it sounds like those are kind of more in the planning process is what I'm hearing from you.
I, I hope so. I mean, that's, I think it's the appropriate place to resolve it, is inside the planning process.
And in the planning process, then we talk about if applicant is gonna do buses, shuttles to the, to the job site. Is that when that is done? Because that would make a huge difference as far as just a traffic in town, if you guys do a, you know, shuttle.
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll see what the traffic study has to say. I mean, to Rick's point earlier about shared parking for two restaurants, I mean, this is going from a coffee shop and a ski shop, where there's going to be a million people in and out there every day, to people that are permanent residents that are, you know, walking and riding a bus to work. And so I want to see what the traffic study has to say. If we need to fix that, if that's part of it, then we will.
No, I guess, but who view, I mean, obviously, you don't want your staff to park at.
No, I can't, we can't. I mean, it's not, we had, they had, the majority has to bust up anyway, so.
Other questions?
The deed restriction, because I know we had a, a conversation as far as what the, the rents would be and that sort of thing. Does that conversation happen during the development agreement? Conversation, not during this conversation, right?
If it's part of the agreement, you know.
Well, I think it will need to be.
Then I think, if you're gonna have, if you, if there are from my conversations with Mike, and I don't want to speak for him, but what's important is he needs sixty six units, right? He's not looking to go in and negotiate whether he only builds sixty. He needs sixty six to make a pencil. There's probably some AMI that he's, so if you have an AMI number that isn't going to meet his. There's probably some AMI that he's been, so if you have an AMI number that isn't going to meet his threshold for how he, you know, covers the nut on this thing. I think you need to throw it out there and see if it works, because he's trying to decide if he's going to be able to pull the trigger on this project.
Yeah, no, soon is, we're supposed to close tomorrow, so soon. In case you're, in case you're looking to watch, it's soon.
Tough too, because we don't know what pencils.
No, no, but I, but in the January 25 meeting, I'm, my commitment is to, I don't want to use AMI, because I don't find it reliable. But my commitment is to a rent cap that was roughly a thousand dollars per month for a unit. Which the way I looked at it, Dick specifically, was $2.50 per month per foot. Each unit is going to vary slightly in size, but if there were 400 square foot units, that is a thousand dollars a month. That's with an annual 3% increase on that per foot range, I'm committed to that.
The 3%, because I know that, that was a, right, that was a conversation point. Well, it went back and forth last time, and so I wasn't sure where that landed.
Well, Eric made the comment about CPI and I'll take 8.2%, which came out today, but we'll just, how about we stick with three and call it a day? Kind of thing, so yeah, no, we're committed to a rent control with a live work deed restriction as part of the development agreement. So rent control mechanism with the live work.
So we'll start at 250 a foot and then go up 3% a year, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And these will be deed restricted at CEO for employee housing?
Yes, every single one of them.
At CEO?
Every foot.
Yeah, that we talked to him about, yeah. I just want, hey, I don't want any surprise.
So it's hard to remember what.
That discussion then is also that those deed restrictions will go in place now, but Mike will have the opportunity to utilize those to fulfill his obligations on future projects.
And allow him to bank these.
At which point he'll pay us back for the TDRs, right?
Yeah, TDRs or PIFs too, we talked about the water too, that if we deploy those for our economic benefit, then I owe the town the money for the PIFs. If I don't, then I don't.
Yeah. So I want to make sure we're clear on that part too, so I mean. I think what we're willing to do, at least what I heard from some of the council before, was that we will waive those pit water PIFs. And we will waive, and we would not charge for TDRs until such time as those units are pulled in to be used to meet 24A.
Right?
Yeah, agreed.
I'm okay, provided that they're, see, that they're deed restricted with our standard deed restriction right off the bat.
I'm good to go with that.
Some question about that initially, so.
Yeah.
Regardless, I don't know where the confusion came from, but that's always been my intent, it still is today, rock solid.
And then we'll negotiate a development agreement around public good and all that stuff at another time, or is, are we doing that right now?
This is it.
Public good is the housing.
I, boy, doing this, this quickly without anything in writing, I'm, I, I'm struggling with that. I mean, if this is, this discussion right now with this report is going to turn into a development agreement.
Well, or an annexation agreement, because we, we may not even need to do it. We, we're discussing whether we need a development agreement, this could be done under an annexation agreement. It's a similar, I mean, it's just another mechanism, but it's still an official.
Either way, I, you know, we don't have any of this stuff.
But there, so.
Well, we will, when she writes it.
It will come back to you, just to be clear.
But for approval, we're not approving it now.
Look, we're looking.
We're kind of talking about the deal points now.
Yeah, no, I think, I feel like this is a good faith discussion of what's going to be memorialized in a document. And so I need to, I need an affirmative response from you guys to go write a check tomorrow, right?
Well, if, if it's a development agreement, then we have to talk about what's public good. If it's an annexation agreement or annexation. I guess an annexation agreement. Are we going to need a development agreement, I guess is my first.
I don't think we do, because I think we just do it via annexation agreement. And he's given a sidewalk and hasn't.
I mean.
You talked about.
Sidewalk a given?
Yeah, sidewalks a given, right?
That was in there, yeah, I don't, yeah, it's fine, I don't mind.
So you'll have a sidewalk to your, to the hotel and down and, and the bus, bus stops are given, you're, that'll get moved at your expense.
Yeah.
Are we only talking about a sidewalk on the?
On the west side of, yeah.
There's already a path.
Already a sidewalk on the other side. Is there one on the east? There's a sidewalk on 450, and he's building a sidewalk on the highway. Okay, which is where it needs to be, there's already sidewalk on the.
Where is, but we don't know where the bus stop's going to be on the east side of the highway yet, do we?
No, and we, well, there's a bus stop there right now, we don't know that the bus stop's going to, well, we don't know that it's going to move. Well, some of that's going to be up to Summit County too.
Sure.
They may not want to move the bus stop, even if the park, if the, if the traffic study says it should move, that doesn't mean the county's going to want to move it.
Well, I would say if the bus stops moves, then the developer needs to buy, build a sidewalk to it.
Well, the sidewalk's going to be built no matter what, on the east side, on the highway side.
On the west side, on the highway.
West and south.
Oh, west of the property, I thought you meant of the highway, west side.
West side of the highway, west side of the project.
There is no other bus stop, it's just one that's currently there for Summit State that we use for Purple Bee.
Right.
Can I just say to Dick on the public benefit, with all respect here, the, the debt served, the debt load on this, these, every single one of these units, negative cash flows. To, to, between two and $400 a month. And so I, in my checkbook, that's massive public benefit. And so, you know, we're, we're setting this up for the sub $20 per hour employees and.
But isn't it for all your employees, or is it?
Not necessarily, I mean, it, no, I mean, not, we've not talked about that, no. And I, I've talked to Rick about the, potentially the town buying some of these units from us as well. And so I'm, right now, conceptually, I'm feeling like about half of the units stay in the BGV bucket and the other half are community. I'm, I'm not, I'm leery of the social experiment of having all BGV 66 times. It, it, that sounds really not great. And so my hope is to do this in a way that it provides a platform to do this again in other places in town. And so I am going to ease my way into the number of BGV only versus community, you know, just to kind of get a, a real world sense of how it will really work. We already have that on our Moose Landing project out on Airport Road. But we want to see how 66 small units work together, and to make sure we don't have, you know, mutinies in there.
If most of the other issues, it sounds like will be dealt with during, you know, future planning efforts, what about the circulation issue? What about circulation outside of the building? Both in and out, you know, in and out of the parking lot?
What, for, for me, Kelly, the, the building that we showed is where it was approved by the county. I, that doesn't mean that I think that's the best place for the building to go, which is why I want to go through the planning process. With the 74 points being set aside through an agreement with this body. And then go through legitimately, go through the planning process to address snow storage, open space, all of those elements in, with the complete integrity of the planning process preserved. In a way that those elements are addressed as you'd expect them to be addressed with any other application.
I mean, one of the things we really want to take a hard look at on this is really where's the best access point on this? And what's the least problematic access point?
Yeah, it's busy.
Because we all, I mean, it was razor planning, we all had, we all know that that coming off of your own road is not great.
Right.
And so there may, you know, and Mike's exploring potentially a share that shared right in, right out, you know, with the development to the north. And is there some way, you know, to minimize that? And we don't, I mean, we're hoping that this is a location where people aren't in and out of there all the time. And so it may, it may not be super convenient, you may have to do U-turns like you do at Breckin to get access. But I don't know if your run's the right place to have a curb cut. And there, there's already one just to go into, but that's very limited use going into the storage.
Right.
But there's one going in there right now. If Mike doesn't buy this, that's going in no matter what, because this is already, this footprint, its access are already approved.
Well, all I'm saying is that I'm glad, just glad to hear that, that this is still being discussed and planned around, because there are a lot of concerns. I mean, we know that there have been issues at that.
It's a busy, dangerous corner right now, so this hopefully.
I think this can be figured out. Planning and down the road with a development agreement, yeah.
I definitely want to give them the height, because, I mean, they're such small units. And that's a huge benefit to those people who are in there.
In a little height is not going to.
Yeah, for two or three feet, it's not, that only hurts the people living.
It's not going to distract from the.
Only hurts the people.
Yeah, the, the quality of 7-Eleven experience, I think they'll, they'll notice it when.
And it blocks the storage units from view too.
Have this slurpee, yeah.
Ah, yeah.
So the 450 TDR, it, are, are we waiving that, or is Mike paying that, or?
No, we would, we would transfer that density out of town owned density in there. And the way it's being proposed is he would not pay for that density until such time as he cashes in.
Gotcha.
And.
That's got you.
Now, yeah, we'll have to determine. You know, how that gets, because there is some density there and when and how it gets cashed in or what that all works out. But yeah, not until those properties are used for 24A.
Rick, why don't we, not, why don't we just make it a proration, right? So that it's not, even if I didn't have it, it's, there's 28,000 square feet and there's say 4,500 extra square feet via TDR. You guys don't want it that I don't pay until I use the last 4,500 square feet, right?
So theoretically, you're not going to use the last 4,400 square.
Right, so let's just.
You're going to have 33 units theoretically that you're not going to do, so it's got to be prorated over the units that you have.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the project's actually over 10 feet in height.
Yeah, but I mean, planning had said two to three feet.
Yeah, just the angle of the roof that they were coming out.
I think I saw solar on there, you going to put solar on there?
Obviously, we'll look at that for sure, we want to, I mean, we're committed.
I know this.
Solar and all electric, Sam, if pot, yeah.
Cool.
This is very much in the weeds, but this is my last chance.
She's been doing this the whole meeting, Mike, I'm telling you.
Squeezing it out, but I asked this before, and I just want to make sure, that's a washer dryer next to the fridge in this little rendering?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And the reason why is because of the extra trips and all that, it's, it's about traffic more than laundry, okay.
It works, can we steal the design? Because it's intriguing.
You can buy the design, you buy the units.
I, I'm really glad that they have a decent like little mud area that's not in the kitchen, I think that's pretty sweet.
I think Mark did a really good job drawing these, and he's got good experience in other, other areas, working with smaller units. And so he was, he brought some good expertise to the design element of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, I'm really supportive, I mean, I think this is a great project. And, and so if I, I, I guess I didn't realize we were proving the whole deal right now and you're buying tomorrow. So all of a sudden I feel some pressure. I just want to get right, so we don't have surprises, you know, I don't want surprises, so, yeah, so that's where I'm coming from.
Me too, I think that if we agree on the global deal points in here, we'll, the other, the details will work out in a way that we both expect them to. I have faith in that.
All right.
The global deal points are the 74 points.
That's the global deal points. That, that, the TDR, the sidewalk, the deed restriction, everything that we've talked about tonight, we'll go into this annexation agreement.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, good?
I think it's funny that we come down to the last minute, we got to tell you the yes or no tonight, so that you can write a check tomorrow.
Well, I mean, well, I came January 25 too, I mean, it's been a couple of months. So I know we had to do the fit test, but we're trying to move fast on this, we want to be able to deliver housing in as quickly as possible, so.
I think it's a good public benefit, and I am in favor, but the details.
Well.
Work them out.
Well, the, the aggressive lawyer that you referred to earlier, we'll just pipe in a little bit here. In, in fairness, council does get an opportunity to review the annexation agreement and with the combined development agreement. So this isn't a guarantee of your position as that comes forward, that's a legislative matter. But I, I certainly am empathetic to the financial situation to make everything move forward. And pen, you know, pending the traffic study, probably want to look at that as well.
Yes.
Dick, good?
Yeah, I, I accept your commitment to negotiating good faith, you know, these final details. I mean, there's more than you, there's always more than you think. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm of the school, you and I've talked, you know, I'm going to do my best to protect the town and you're going to protect your business. So I think we're going to have to negotiate in good faith. And I prefer not to do them like this, this fast, under this, this kind of pressure, but I'm in favor. I mean, I'll, I'll take the leap, for, I mean, it's 66 units of housing, so.
Aaron?
Um, yeah, I support it, thanks for building housing. I mean, I guess a, just a footnote is that I, I wish that there were some, some more bullets that we could have looked at. But you all will have the chance to look at that later, and thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, this is, I'm supportive of the project, I mean, especially when you take the alternative, which could be more commercial. I mean, housing is a huge public benefit, so Erica, second ago, the points you lifted off, listed off for the agreement, I'm supportive of those. And I really like hearing that a large portion will be open to the town and other employers. Because a lot of employers can't build their own housing, and it's great that you are. And I'm wondering if that's something we'd want to consider within agreement, that it is open to town or other employees.
Like putting the.
Like a percentage, or we'd negotiate that, or, but yes, I would like to see that in writing.
Kelly?
Yeah, this is a great project, and it's a good looking project, and I think that corner will get a nice little facelift, that whole area. If you'd be willing to put in that some portion would be open to, open to other employers, I think that'd be fantastic.
Yes, but not at a percent, I mean, I'm not going to, I don't want to box myself into 50/50 kind of a deal right now, I just haven't done the economics on it. But my philosophy is consistent with what you're saying. I just need to look at the economics of it, I think that there's, in terms of how we want to price these things, we might have a, well, there's a, there's a lot of different variables involved. And so I can make a commitment to say that we can make a certain amount of, or a percentage available to be determined in the future. But I don't want to say something right now that I live to regret.
That's fair.
I hate to give up on the idea of the come and go, but, but yeah, I think studio is the way to go, I think we can work this out. You know, I do think, you know, I'd like to know sometime, or I guess I'm comfortable with agreement that these, some of these will be opened up to the public or maybe even to town to purchase. But yeah, I'm, I think we move forward.
And to, to be clear, if someone bought the unit from us, they would still be encumbered with the live work deed restriction and the $1,000 a month rent cap. And so if I turn around and sell some of these to whoever, ABC Inc., there's, they still have to live within those rent controls, right? And so that's why I want to make sure I understand the economics before we get into saying what number I can commit to that would be available to others.
Right, I like that.
It changes the value of the sale.
No, I mean, right, it's a microscopic cap rate, right?
So I've been intimately involved with at least six really bad ideas on this site over the last 25, 30 years. That has come before us. Marty's last plan was probably one of the least reprehensible that, that we've seen. And this is by far the best, and the, I'm totally fine with this, because it fits in exactly the same box that's going to go there for commercial. So, you know, if you just think about it from a community standpoint, the community's getting a box, what do you want in that box? Well, we are spending an astronomical amount of money as a community to build housing. To trade, to trade what could potentially be a Starbucks or whatever was going to be commercial for 66 units. I'm all in for waiving 74 points for just that reason. Because of the, the efforts we've made to build housing, the fact that we have a developer that'll build housing without us putting any skin in the game, long term, other than density and water that we will then get, get the money back. So I think this is an easy one. As far as it being fast, look, I thought in January, we had a. So I think this is an easy one. As far as it being fast, look, I thought in January, we had a fairly good agreement with all the points we really talked about tonight that we all sort of agreed on. So I don't find this to be fast. And when it comes to housing, you know how it is, we need to move fast. Th- this is not, if this was what he normally builds, if this is timeshare, I would totally agree that this is way too fast. I'm not ready to agree to this, but this is a desperate need in the community. And even if it is just for his employees, that still frees up sixty six other units in the community for other things. So this, this amorphous mass of housing we have in this community that we wanna add to that stock, the more anybody individually builds, the more we have for everybody else. So I think this is a very easy one for me and I am, as you know, I can be very particular on these kind of issues. But this one's an easy one, mainly because it is purely housing, it's small housing, it's stuff, stuff we've talked about for quite a while about trying to build ourselves. Go to it, man. Let's make sure this development gets done right. You come back to planning, you work out some of these other points that need to be massaged. I think this is an easy one for me.
When are you going to get people in?
Come on, Sam, commit.
I think eight, I think eighteen months. And Marty probably won't think it's very reprehensible if he cashes the check tomorrow, so.
He totally won't.
You probably made a little bit of money on Kansas anyway, so you're, you're flush.
All right. Mike, thanks, guys. Thanks, Sam.
Thank you.
Anything else to add for work session?
Do everything later?
Yeah.
All right.
Are we gonna invite, uh, the new guys in the evening?
I'm muting.
Not doing, uh, BTO. Yeah. Let's beat things up. Left, I'm not left handed though, so be careful, I might hit you.
Yeah. Should put on safety glasses.
You should, you know what? Not a bad idea. He's mean.
Hey, did you tell her she can't slap me like most girls?
And on that note, I'd like to call to order the town of council, regular meeting for the town of Breckenridge. It's April twelfth, twenty twenty one at seven PM. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sade.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Chielo.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes for March twenty two, twenty twenty two. Anybody have anything bad or takeout?
These good minutes.
I don't remember them. I assume that's what I said.
Note that the, the date is wrong on that. I believe it should be March eighth. That was my fault.
All right, March eighth, twenty twenty two.
Oh, actually, well, yeah.
Wait, what?
Never mind, March twenty second, that's correct.
Yeah, it should be.
It was April.
All right, no, no changes. So minute stand is presented. Agenda, Rick?
No changes.
All right. Before we get to communications council, I wanna take a moment to thank our colleagues who are leaving us, going on to different things. Dennis, thank you for, um, coming in at really a difficult time. I know that wasn't the best way to, to be on council, being on Zoom from the beginning. You know, I felt for you the whole time because it, you just don't get the camaraderie that, that we get to share up here, um, with that. So that was a bummer, but, um, I appreciate, um, your contribution. Appreciate what, what you've brought to town for years, being on, you know, open space and, and other things you've done for this community. And things I'm sure you will continue to do for this community and discussions you and I had over the years about ski area and a lot of other things. So thank you, um, for what you've done. And Erin, um, Erin was on before me and I had to make a point when I decided to run for council of, uh, calling Erin to get her, not necessarily support, but just to tell her what I was up to, cause Erin was afraid I was gonna come in and, and push everybody around. So I took everything she said to heart and I think a lot of, uh, the management style that I've had from council came from, uh, came from her. So, um, I had, I had the, the good fortune to have some coffee with Erin as sort of a, an exit interview. And we talked about, um, you know, just what, what she relished and what, what she thought. And one thing she said to me was, um, how she really sort of disliked the pandemic part of it. But I really think, I mean, all of us hated it, but I think that was really a unique opportunity for all of us to sort of do the right thing. And, um, I think both of you are a big part of, of what we, what we did for the community. So, thank you.
Now get out.
Now, we need that seat. All right, with that, uh, communications council, we have citizens comments, non-agenda items only, three minute time limit, please. Anybody in the audience like to say a few words? And with that, citizens comments are closed. We go to continued business. We have second reading, council bill number nine, series two thousand and twenty two. It's an ordinance approving a development agreement between the town and Synergy Ventures, Inc., owner Ann Mark and Marilyn Hogan, buyers. Chapin?
Mayor Council, this ordinance approved tonight on second reading. Authorize a development agreement with Mark and Marilyn Hogan and Synergy Ventures in order to convert the commercial condominium to Big Sky, Big Sky condo unit GA to employee housing. The agreement would exempt the development permit application to the planning commission or the proposed change views from certain sections of the development code regarding vacancy and transfer. It also commit the town transferring.
I didn't notice that. Thank you. It also commit the town to transferring town owned density and waiving planning division application fees. In exchange, the agreement commits the applicant to a restrictive covenant for, uh, limiting the occupancy to employee housing. The, the agreement ordinance and employee housing restrictive covenant have been modified since first reading to prohibit short term rental. Staff is supportive of the ordinance on second reading.
Thank you, Chapin. Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public wish to comment on this ordinance, the second reading of this ordinance this evening? Saying none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, on second reading, and we'll be past council bill number nine, series twenty twenty two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No second, you know, just, she gets the next one.
I'll get the next one.
She'll get, last one. Uh, any discussion? No, roll call, please.
Ms. Chielo.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have the first reading of, uh, council bill number ten, series twenty twenty two. It's an ordinance approving a ground lease with the family and intercultural resource center.
Mayor and council, in front of you is an ordinance that if approved on, uh, first reading would allow the town, obviously has to be approved on second reading, but allow the town to enter into a seventy five year ground lease for a area of land approximately one acre, uh, in the McCain subdivision, uh, with FERC as you stated. The purpose is that is for them to build a new flagship center for the FERC operations there. There are a number of conditions in this ground lease that I feel protects the town and the use of this property over the term of the lease. So it, you know, it can't be changed and used for other purposes or things like that. So I feel, feel very comfortable with the conditions that are in the lease. I think it supports what the council's looking for. FERC is also comfortable with the conditions as written.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? Last chance.
No more questions.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Mayor and council.
I mean, if it.
Uh, I make a motion to prove, uh, council bill number ten, series twenty twenty two, which has read, been read into the record. See, I wasn't prepared.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chielo.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have planning commission decisions. Uh, any call ups this evening? Nope. Planning commission decisions stand as presented. We've Colorado Mountain College student housing development hearing. This is PL two zero two two zero zero six four.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sarah Crump, Planner One for the town. Um, I'll be presenting on the proposed Colorado Mountain College student housing development as a courtesy review. Per the signed two thousand and seven MOU between the town of Breckenridge and CMC, um, staff has conducted a limited courtesy review for projects on the CMC campus. CMC takes our review and any comments from this public hearing, um, under consideration. The planning commission has recommended that the town council approve this project. However, the final jurisdiction and decisions for design are dictated by the state of Colorado, which governs the design and construction of public schools. So this application proposes one three story student housing building to be constructed at one oh seven Denison Plaza Road. The building proposed on this site, uh, on the vacant site on the south end of the CMC parcel, um, which is visible from highway nine. The site's located in land use district thirty one, which allows all facilities, um, that are commonly used with the operation of a public college or university, university as an acceptable use, including student housing. Um, so land use guidelines call for a zero floor area ratio for schools and associated facilities in this land use district. So there's no density on site and none required. The building is proposed to be twenty three thousand one hundred and three square feet with thirty six units. Twelve of those are studios and twenty four, or twenty four are studios and twelve are two bedroom units. And they'll be exclusively for student housing. The primary exterior material of the proposed structure is hardy board plank siding, um, shown in both a green sage green color and a wood look. The weathered corrugated metal will be on an accent and wainscoting, um, covering less than twenty five percent of each facade. Natural elements will also be used on the building, the soffit, roof, purlins, trellis columns on the lower level, um, are all going to be natural wood. Some updates to the proposed, um, design are, that are not reflected in the rendering that's shown on the screen, is the stucco in the center of the building will actually be the hardy plank siding instead. Um, staff and the planning commission are generally pleased with the design of this multi unit building. We feel the overall proposed architectural style, color and material choices are, um, blend well with the neighboring residential developments and, um, they're cohesive with the site's natural background. So this project does not need to have a passing point analysis and the vote to approve the project does not set any further precedent for future projects that would be reviewed by the planning commission or the town council. And that's per the two thousand and seven MOU. So again, the planning commission has recommended that the town vote tonight to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, any questions from staff or staff? The one in the public wish to comment on this planning hearing. The planning commission, public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
Move the town approve the Colorado Mountain College student housing development hearing, a development, uh, yeah, PL two thousand and twenty two zero zero six four.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Dave and CMC for taking the neat lead on this. I, any housing's great housing in our valley, so really appreciate it. No, thanks, Dave.
Absolutely.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Chielo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have a report of town manager and staff.
We already got approval on Melanie Park. I'll let you know, I'll be out of town for a couple of days. Eric and I had a meeting today with, uh, BGV and the ski area to discuss. I had raised the issue about, we thought there was consensus on doing a traffic study to look at potentially our parking agreement and should parking for future developments on North Gondola maybe be in another location in the ski area. Uh, decided that they really didn't wanna study moving parking out there and that. And I think in the meeting today, they stressed to us that they are supportive of the development as it is, but they are intrigued about the potential or possibility if there was a lift a, a gondola or a lift, it had to be a gondola, closed system running from the airport road property up to Peak Seven. And they would be certainly supportive if the town wanted to study the feasibility of, if that is a possibility that there could be a lift and get kind of a ballpark of what that lift could cost if one were to be built. Everybody agreed that before, there's certainly a lot of things that would have to be hashed out. Once we know, if, once we have those answers on what that could look like, who's paying for what. But the first step is trying to identify, um, if it's feasible. If it's feasible, doable, how many obstacles would there be and what potentially would it cost to have that done if we were to do it? So, um, uh, SE group is kind of the local expert that the ski area would work with. Anytime they would be doing something like this, they gave me a point of contrast to have reached out to them and ask them, you know, if this is something that they could do and how long would it take? And they thought it'd be a fairly quick process that could, they could probably do within thirty days. And they're gonna submit a, uh, kind of a, just a one pager on, uh, proposed costs for that. So, um, I think it'd be considerably less than, you know, what we were considering doing before, which is a full blown traffic analysis, looking at all kinds of things. But so, I don't, um, I don't know what that is, but I think, I guess I'm, you know, I can send out once I get that. If I can send it out to you and see if it's something that you wanna act on, I would like, I think if we're, I think we need to. I think we need to explore and either put it to bed or not and see if it's something that can be done. And um, I can't imagine it being too awfully expensive because most of the work, they're gonna be looking at computer screens and analyzing and doing some stuff, you know, but who knows?
From where to where?
From the airport property up to Peak Seven, potentially.
The, the skier parking lot on the airport.
Oh, just directly, okay.
Yeah, just directly.
Yeah.
If, if we could, so the traffic study that we were proposing that they opposed, wa- was that like a huge comprehensive traffic study or just kind of what it would take? Uh, what would be the benefits, the pros and cons of moving a parking structure or, yeah, parking reservoir to the north?
Partially, impartially, are there any other ways to get those people to town, maybe a bus lane or something like that?
I don't think they see any of that as a enhancement to customer experience. If you were to put, if to move that many customers out at the edge of town and then try to figure out how to get them to the gondola?
Mm-hmm.
They, they do not see that as an enhancement to customer experience.
Do we see it as, as?
Yes, we do, and we told them that
Yeah.
the situation will be pretty terrible once we get a thousand car garage and another two or three hundred cars for um the development. Yeah, why wouldn't we want to look at something else? I'm a little baffled.
Not gonna be a great experience.
It's not gonna be a great experience, yeah.
I don't know why I'm so slow on this, but the parking study would be part of.
There's no parking study.
So there, so we asked for a parking study and they came back and said, how about a lift?
No.
Or how about we study the feasibility for a lift?
Lift was part of the, we knew a lift was something that, that's the only thing.
We would have a lift without any more parking out there?
No, that's where we would potentially then.
Do a parking study?
Potentially, the parking structure would go out there.
Right, but we would do, would a parking study be part of this at all then?
No, it doesn't need to be. If you had a gondola out there, you wouldn't need a parking study, because that's how you're getting people.
We would purposely want the parking out there.
So they don't want a parking study because they're afraid of what the parking study will come up with?
Yeah.
I don't know, Rick and I were both a little confused about the way this went, because at the first meeting, it seemed like we were gonna do it, no big deal.
Yeah.
It's just a study to find out what, if what we're doing is wrong or not.
We could study on our own.
Well, I don't think they want it to be, I don't think they want to shine a light on um something potentially being wrong with the development. Like the comment that was made, if, if it was such a bad, if it's such a bad development, why is it being approved?
And I told them it's not approved yet, so.
Yeah. In the master plan, but.
I mean, it's master planned, but it's not approved.
I mean, we can decide on the parking stutter after we hear about the lift.
I mean, if we decide we wanted to do something, you know, depending what happens, we can always, we can do our own study. We can always do that, but, you know, we're trying to play nice right now and.
For sure, this, I mean, the lift would be ideal for everyone. A lift would be like a perfect scenario.
Might be a little pricey.
Well, before we even start discussing things like price, we need to make sure that there's an alignment that possibly works. And, I mean, just a general, you know, the thing's four hundred million dollars, I don't think we're doing it.
You could buy a lot of Bluebird buses for that.
Is that, did they say they'd want it to go to Peak Seven? It'd be the closest. General.
Uh, not exactly, but we, that's the most direct, right? Where else would it, yeah.
I mean, ten years ago, this is something we never would have talked about, because we always talked about, those people have to be in town.
Yeah.
I think we've learned that there's a segment of the people that come here to ski that, they just want to go ski. You know, the, the, the view against us doing something would be, why would the town pay to get skiers on the mountain? Well, the town would pay, potentially partner in this to ease up some of the congestion that we feel in town. That's, that would be the whole reason. So I think it's defensible that we're at least looking at it, and then we would potentially partner if it was something we could do.
I think that's something to think about philosophically if we're paying to keep people out of town.
Yeah, but I mean, part of the, I mean, even the destination management plan has said, let's pay to keep, or let's make a priority to keep people, you know, get people out of their cars. I mean, to improve quality of life. I mean, congestion and traffic, this last four months has been probably the number one comment we've gotten on impacts the quality of life.
Oh, and I, I don't disagree, it's just, I, I think this adds to that overcrowding conversation of if we're at a point where we're paying millions of dollars so that people aren't coming into town, it's just, it's a statement. It's just saying something that like, yeah, of course, we want people out of cars, but I think there's an assumption there that they're in Breckenridge out of cars. But like, we're keeping people out of cars out of Breckenridge, so it's just something to think about.
The way I see, I mean, I, I hear you. The way I see it is, we're giving the day skier a better option.
Yep.
They don't have to come and get caught in all the congestion.
Yeah, but it's about the skier. It's, I mean, it's actually similar to your point before about, you know, where should our tax dollars go? And if it's to ke- keep, it's, if it's to the day skier that's not having anything to do with Breckenridge, then I don't know.
And I don't even know what our financial commitment would be, I, you know, right now, we know zero about, we know there's a potential alignment, that's really all we know, we know zero about anything else, so.
Yeah.
It's worth looking at, it's probably, I mean, I, I wouldn't bet on this. I doubt it's something we could pull off, but I hate to not, you know, I hate to not look at it, at least from a, you know, thirty thousand foot view and, and know that we can't do it, or, or think, oh, maybe it's a possibility. So, everybody okay with having a look?
Yeah. All right. We had. I already wanted to remind you about on April twenty-seventh, so we'll have Peyton send out a calendar invite to all of you, but Dennis said, all right, celebrate.
We.
And we're working with Tim Berry still.
Looks in dancing. Working with Tim Berry.
Trying to be.
It's a big, busy day.
He's out of cruise, he's.
Oh, as he should be. I like thinking about that. Like a co- a cocktail with a lot of fruit, yeah.
Umbrella. Uh, we had uh MMC. What do we even talk about? We talked about the elections, we spent some.
About fire.
Talked about fire, like, it's gonna be a terrible fire season, I think we're all already on pins and needles and the towns want to go to fire restrictions before, you know, the sheriff sort of sets the tone for that, the county. And we've always followed that, some of the towns don't agree.
So uh, we uh, everybody let Frisco know that we were not happy that they have decided they're doing fireworks this year in Frisco.
For July fourth?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Everybody, uh, oh, wow, yeah. All, you know, he just decided to do this, huh?
What was not, not unanimous, was not unanimous on their council.
Yeah.
But if there are fire restrictions in place, what they.
They won't, no, they won't be, and they still have to get approval from uh,
Iraq.
That, yeah, the lake, so, and they've pretty much been told, don't expect help from anybody else, so.
I mean, that's gonna be a mess. Twenty years ago, when we had way less traffic, it was gridlock on Highway nine.
Yeah. And it's not just, uh, you know, Sea Dot's got some big projects going on too, they're doing that whole widening of that off-ramp, the two oh three that'll run basically from Silverthorne up to Frisco on westbound. So that's a pretty much all summer project.
So, I'm glad we don't have any projects this summer. Uh, open space.
Oh, um, we had a meeting. Scott went over a lot of what was talked about, um, seasonal hires are being hired. Um, talked a little bit about Forest Health, um, projects, the puberty plaster feels reduction, um, is under contract. The shock hill and Airport Road hazardous fuels reduction, Forest Health project request for RFPs are out. Um, we had a master plan update, as you've heard. Um, and then we talked with Tamra from Recreates and the Biffa and the Trail Mix um proposals, and that was supported by Bosak, so that's good. And then we talked about different McCain property options, um, as Kelly alluded to. Bosak had some really interesting things to say about some different options, um, that they thought, but it was very like first blush, I, that's how you say that. Um, but I think the open house will um just continue the conversation and bring in some more information of what the community wants. But it was an interesting talk about like where, where the bike path should go, what we should do with the land, should we do anything with the land, should it be some green space? Should it be a bike trail or a hiking trail? So it was, it was a good discussion.
Cool. When's the Wellington burn gonna happen?
Not for another.
I've asked this, next year.
Sorry, this fall. As soon as it snows.
Speaking of Bosak, I want to thank Erin for her hard work these last couple of years on Bosak. I think she, her effort really showed ver- bad fruit.
Thank you.
It's gonna be a tough act to follow, Jeffrey.
Yeah, I think it will be, and, and I won't try.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Tourism.
Uh, they were gonna talk to us tonight, so I didn't have an update.
No, good, that's fine.
History, Breckenridge history, Rick stole all my thunder, I had it all laid out.
Go out right there, man, that's awesome.
Uh, Recreate.
We haven't had a meet, we didn't have a meet, we didn't have a meeting, um, next week? Right. There you go.
Awesome. Uh, Events.
Events was in our pocket.
Childcare.
Was also in our pocket today.
Housing.
Also in our pocket.
And social equity.
Monday, if you haven't had a meeting.
Other matters.
I have sort of a big one.
Let's hear it.
Um, some of the restaurants in town who've been providing an outdoor seating experience um in their parking are interested in doing that again this year. And not just like a one-year thing, but really interested in doing it more long-term. Um, I did talk with them, you know, sort of about the concern about the additional employees and um, I, you know, there's really no way to keep them honest about this, but the way they've talked about it is, well, we put ten tables outside, we keep ten tables inside empty so that if the rain or weather changes, they can come in, so we're actually not having additional staff. Um, they said that the experience they're providing is really something people want. Lots of times, people could come inside and sit immediately, but they're willing to wait for an outside table. And they didn't attribute that necessarily to COVID, but more to um, sitting outside and Breckenridge, you know, we're just getting warmer and warmer, soon we'll be tank tops all summer long. So anyway, I think, um, you know, I think there's something to be said about, and I, I think the difficult thing is that some experiences that are provided are better than others. And um, so obviously, we would need to understand the experience and what people are doing. I think Breck Brewery had a lot of success. Um, and they did, you know, they're interested in having more of the long-term. So I said I would bring it up at council and see what the appetite is.
Didn't we say we weren't gonna do this?
Well, I feel like we have a policy for this, right? Like, didn't we just vote on a policy for this? So I, I think there's that, and I think.
Well, it all expires in May.
No, no, I mean, the policy that we just passed about outdoor dining, when you expand.
They're gonna lose parking, so that's.
But that's, and that was my second point, was the parking, is that there needs to be, I don't, some plan for that. Uh, but I'll be gone.
Yeah, I think that's, I think Erin's point's a good one, like, any of these shouldn't be a one-off, it should work within the code we have. And in that specific instance, I'm not sure how it works with our new um, outdoor seating.
Yeah.
But for fairness, it has to work through our code.
What's the downside? Just that we lose parking?
Yeah, and it's the same, I mean, honestly, part of it is the same reason we didn't do Walk Well Main, is there's a certain amount of unfairness to places they can't do it.
Can do it.
You know?
If they could figure out that parking piece, and they can work within the policy, they pay for it.
I mean, then they would just building a, be building a deck.
Yeah.
But they'd have to replace that parking, which you can't really do in the core.
Well, they can buy into the parking district.
They could do that.
I don't know if you can do it if you have potentially parking on site. I don't know how that piece works in the code. You can buy in and, and get rid of those parks, so they could do that.
I mean, I think we would want to have, well, I think we need to go back to the no tents and there, there's a number of different things that.
We have tried, we've, uh, staff, because staff gets contacted a lot on this. We've tried this to be consistent in that messaging that this, you know, that was it. Is it May, end of May, I can't, end of May, that everything's got, you know, the yurts, the temporary tents, everything's coming down.
But if they're asking for this without the tents.
If they could do it under that code where it's outdoor seating, outdoor decks, patios, however we classify.
So they would have to pay into the parking district, they would have to do fifty percent of all the piffs and everything for the um, additional density, basically. And uh, I mean, if it's within the code, it's within the code. But I want to be certain that we're not allowing tents all over the place. I mean, cause I.
Then we said that, we said that last year, we'd do one more.
Oh, I know, but we also said we weren't gonna do this either, so.
You have to go in and declare, do we have to declare COVID over, we said, we haven't done that yet, have we?
I don't know, hasn't the health department?
Yeah, but you have to.
I do, so I can keep it going. Put your masks on.
You did say that you were proud of COVID.
Every, all the temporary rules and the temporary orders were all until the mayor declares that the, you know, the pandemic.
Pandemic's over.
There you go, there's, there's my declaration.
Some of the reasons, some of them are extended though, is for fu- for funding purposes, so we would want to.
Yeah, but we also haven't purposely, we had, I don't believe, we haven't declared it at an end yet.
We should probably have a look at that, huh?
Yeah, we don't want to cut off.
Maybe talk to a doctor.
Yeah, maybe we should make sure COVID is over.
Dave's wearing a mask, so it's obviously not, right? Well, let's figure that out and.
Oh, we will on that, but I just, I mean, I'm not hearing a uh, an overwhelming response to when they look at.
Well, I think the problem is we just did that code revision.
Yeah.
We just did a code revision and to allow some to not fall under the code revision, I think is pretty tough.
Well, I think you have to.
I don't know how we justify that, yes.
I would have to, yeah.
But that's not.
I mean.
Call Chapin?
Yeah.
Find out how they're gonna check.
Know what it was gonna, what it's gonna cost?
Just what you wanted to hear, right, Chapin?
Website, it'll take care of it.
Good?
Yeah.
Is your answer?
Not my answer.
Well, it's your answer to give to your constituents.
I am a person of the community.
Yeah, you're the best, don't kill the messenger. Any other matters? Any last matters?
I'd like to say, I just, I would just like to recognize that um, I feel very privileged and grateful to be able to serve this town that I love so much in this way. And it's not, that's, that's not been lost on me over the last eight years. And it also hasn't been lost on me how great our staff is and how lucky we are to have all of you working for this town. And it's just, we're so, we're all so much better off for it. And I, I don't think that seen quite as much as, as it, or recognized, not necessarily by, but like, uh, from our community. I don't think our staff is recognized enough, because you all do such wonderful work. And we show up, you know, every other week, and you're all so great to work with, so thank you for that. Rick and Shannon, you're amazing. Rick and Shannon, you're amazing. Shannon, I describe you as a superhero to people. You're, you're just fantastic. And Rick.
What about me?
Okay, you're, you're okay. You know, you are, you're okay. No, but I mean, you're, it's, it's been amazing working with you. And I just, I think so highly of both of you and thank you. And as far as this council goes, I just feel fortunate to work with all of you. And it's, it's, and I talked to Eric a little bit about this. It's an incredible feeling as a human to be able to work with people who you disagree with. And you can feel safe enough to have a conversation where you just fall on different sides. And you can recognize and respect each other in such a way where you appreciate what the other person is saying, but yet still feel safe enough to hold your own opinion and express it. And I just feel so lucky to be a part of that with all of you. And I just hold nothing but just love and fondness for, you know, the time that we've spent arguing. So thank you for that. And what a unique experience this eight years has been. And thank you for wanting to continue, you know, serving this community and representing our neighbors. And I just, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, I did. Dennis?
I just want to thank you all for the, the things I've learned. It's been a great experience. And I love working with every one of you. Thank you.
Who would you like to take your number eight designation? Is it going to be Jay or?
I think they should arm Russell over and.
We know how that would turn out. Maybe Carol on Russell Todd.
Anything, Dad? Mr. Carlton? All right. With that, Eric, Eric. Thanks, everyone. Drinks at.
Eric's?
Yeah.